Our board is sponsoring it this year, so just to thank the community for all their support.
It's pretty cool.
Your attention please. please. Let's go to the board to register our attendance. Tonight, we were going to have the City of Clinton High School here at the color guard, but due to the inclement weather and the postponement, we're going to do all that next month. And we'll also be honoring Coach Lockard at the same time. So what we're going to do for the prayer is from the school board, Scott Gilmore is going to do the prayer, and Chief Lucas will do the pledge. Scott?
Shall we pray? Gracious and loving God, we give you thanks for all the many blessings that you give to us, and at this beginning of this new year, we give you thanks for all the new things that we have, the new life that comes from you, from the newness that comes after an afternoon shower for the new year, for a new week. We give you thanks. We are grateful for all the many blessings that you give to us, many of which we take for granted. We pray now that you'll bless this commission, give them wisdom and guidance tonight, and help them to make decisions that would be pleasing to you. Remind us, Lord, that no matter what happens here tonight, you're in charge, you're the creator of the universe, and that all things bow to you. Again, we thank you for the many blessings you give to us, bless us and save us for Christ's sake, in whose name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the approval and correction of agendas. First, the consent agenda. Welling, all those who appear as citizens, I'm sorry. Do we have any citizens? Ms. Jordan? State your name, please, and your address.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Ann Jordan, and I live at 350 Bacon Springs Road in Clinton.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I want to introduce myself, Ann Jordan, to those of you I haven't met, to update you and to thank you. I realize that many of you have been watching an awful lot of emails going back and forth related to Oak Ridge Hardwoods, and I really appreciate your attention. Sorry. First, though, I want to mention a note I got on Friday from the owner of Oak Ridge Hardwoods. In fact, I believe he might be in the audience tonight. He copied his email to Mayor Frank, and I hope the rest of you might have seen it, too. His comments don't really change anything substantively, but I was struck in his note that he mentioned that several of my emails to the county commissioners and to the mayor had been forwarded to him. I'm absolutely fine with him seeing anything that I write, but I would have appreciated being CC'd on the forwarded emails, and if it happens again, I'd appreciate being forwarded just a copy. But regardless of what's going on with the email, I want to stay focused on the actual concerns. The sawmill is still running and producing disruptive noise continuously, most weekdays from 7:00 until 7:30 a.m. until 10:00 p.m. at night, and often on Sunday afternoons as well, as it did yesterday. Large logging trucks use Highway 61 to access the sawmill, but no special signage or visible means to enforce special Tennessee motor vehicle laws related to these trucks, including the use of compressor brakes, is in evidence. Community members have also noted that the sawmill entrance is located almost directly across the highway from an elementary school. I think you've seen some previous emails on this, at least I hope you have, so I'm not going into all of the background on it. Anyway, despite the accusations in the Oak Ridge Hardwoods note, which left me perplexed, my wish has always been and remains to work with Oak Ridge Hardwoods to find a solution which will enable both the sawmill to meet its needs and the residents to have their needs met, too. Mayor Frank and I have both asked Oak Ridge Hardwoods to address concerns collaboratively, but my offers to facilitate a win-win situation have gone unanswered, and now the owner of Oak Ridge Hardwoods has asked that I not discuss the matter further with them. So while I want to handle the issue amicably, I also want all concerned to understand my resolve to reestablish a pleasant atmosphere in Marlowe. And I'm sure that everyone here realizes that taking steps to mitigate the sound, vibration, and other issues will, in the long run, cost considerably less than alternate methods of resolving the problem. Anyway, I'm here simply to emphasize the seriousness and immediacy of the issue and to request a status update on the complaint. That's all. Thank you for your time.
My name is Larry Rosenbaum. I live at 103 Watson Circle, Clinton, Tennessee. And I speak a little loud because I don't hear well, and also, that way, I'm very easily understood. My peeve tonight is the double standards that waste management operates under. I normally take my trash over to, I call it Peak Station, and a lot of people's not old enough to know where Peak Station is, so it's over at the end of East Wolf Valley, right next door to the hitching post. There's two compactors over there that the men only operate one at a time. You go to Knox County, and the Carnes community, they have a convenience center there that's got four compactors. On any given Saturday you want to go to Carnes, you'll see that all four compactors are open to be trash put in. I said something to the man, and he said, "Well, I've been told only one at a time." There's been several Saturdays that I've been in a line all the way up to, literally, the entrance to East Wolf Valley. I'm not lying about this. I have elected now to try to take my trash on Friday, but I also take my mother's trash. My mother's 95 years old. I'm very fortunate that my mother's still alive. But a lot of times, her trash can't get together on Friday, and I have to make a Saturday trip as well. But all I'm saying is, hey, my tax dollars is going, I think, to Waste Management for the collection of this, and why can't both compactors be open on any given Saturday, like the ones in Knox County where they have four compactors? Oh, I don't know whether this is under your all's agenda, or whether I need to go to Waste Management, or whether I need to go to Governor Bill Haslam, by the way, I know personally. So y'all, as the old saying is, the rubber's on the road now, the ball's in your court, somebody needs to do something. Pardon? I'd say he could.
Thanks, Larry.
For those that don't know me, my name is Chris Kazai, and my family's the owners and operators of Oak Ridge Hardwoods. And I came just because I knew there would be some comments about our operation, and I felt that the business that we put our life into for 40-plus years deserved for me to stand up for it, so I wanted to come and just speak on my behalf. I would like to just say that I've made some attempts initially through Mayor Frank to meet with Ms. Jordan and try and appease her. We monitored and changed our schedule to try and shut down some of our later operations to help her, and evidently, that's not satisfied what she would like us to do. She talks about the urgency of this issue. We've been in business for 40 years. We've been in business at this site for 18 years. This site has been a sawmill since 1969. Ms. Jordan didn't move here till 2006, or at least that's when she bought that property. So she moved by us, we didn't move by her. We have done testing for noise, we have used decimal meters to test. We are well within the requirements of our zoning, which allow up to 80 decimals, and we barely bust 70 most of the time, and in the evenings when she was concerned about, we're in the 50s and 60s. So I just wanted to come stick up for our business. We contribute a lot to the community. A lot of you are our customers, a lot of you are people that we do business with as vendors. Some of these kids have played on teams with Oak Ridge Hardwoods jerseys on them at the boys' club, and we feel like we have been good neighbors to the community. We feel like we've done a lot, and I will work with Mayor Frank and with the Public Works Department to do anything that we're required to do under the zoning ordinances that we are under. Personally, I feel right now we are meeting that, and to hold us to a higher standard is unfair. All I would ask is, as this group is concerned with that, just be fair and rational. We have 30 employees, we have more subcontractors, more customers, we contribute a lot to the community, and I just wanted to have a fair treatment of what we're doing and just express that we are trying to be good neighbors, we've always tried to be good neighbors, and we'll continue to try and be good neighbors, and all we can ask for is fair treatment. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, it's your turn. Commissioner White, you have a statement?
I just wanted to speak in Mr. Kazai's behalf. I've been a neighbor in the Marlowe area for about 50 years, and I pass that sawmill every day, and I've never received a complaint about the noise factor, I've never received a complaint. Now, sometimes there are mud on the road, but that's when an 18-wheeler comes in or out, but they've been good neighbors. They've been good to the schools. The noise factor, I've never had a complaint about that, so I'm sort of surprised that if there is a study going on, I would like to know about what's going on or be part of it, because I've never been confronted with any kind of a problem. Thank you.
Commissioner Fritz?
I'd like to refer Mr. Rosenbaum's concern to the Solid Waste Committee, so maybe they can look at it in their own peak times, especially up when traffic is backed up down the road, this is a safety issue for traffic to be backed down the road, to where they can maybe open up, if we've got two compactors, or three compactors, or in the future, four compactors, or whatever, that we do what we can do to accommodate the citizens of this community.
I think Commissioner McCamey, when he was up here, he let me know that he was going to handle that, put it on there.
We'll put it on the agenda for next month.
Commissioner Hitchcock?
I'll speak up when I can. The data's pretty good when you're talking about the noise level, the decibels and things. And I'm sitting here thinking, I go over to Vernon Long's folks, I go over to Donna and Naomi Long's a lot. And I hunt a few mushrooms every once in a while out behind Oak Ridge Hardwoods, and I grew up in a sawmill town, South Alabama, and had a chipper. And they're a little noisy, but my question is, what about all the other neighbors? Have you polled the other neighbors and done it in a way that you have a comparison of distance, but also of topography? Because you know, in Tennessee, they call a holler a holler, because it's the distance you can holler at another person that's still here. And we got a new house, and I can't hear my wife in the other room anymore, I used to be able to hear anywhere. So you really have to have a well-designed survey, which means you probably pay for it, but I think at this point, that might be called for, because as long as it's Who Shot John, it's going to carry on. I think you need some quantitative metrics, okay? That's just for what it's worth.
Ms. Roberts?
Well, this is not a complaint at all.
Speak, your name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Adele Roberts, and I live in Oliver Springs, and I'm an author of six children's books called The Adventures of Sammy the Skunk. This is the first one, second, third, and fourth, okay, all the way down, six, seven. I was approached by a member of the TDOT when I was doing a presentation to do an article or do a story about littering and recycling, using all the statistics used that they gave me from the state. And so I wrote a story called Critters Don't Litter, and I will show you what it looks like, and I have a copy for most of you here. This is the book, Critters Don't Litter. For these stories, I had a professional artist from Oak Ridge, Kathy Holland, and I decided that I would do something a little bit different, and I went to Roanoke State Community College and went to the art department and asked them if there would be anybody who would be interested in doing some illustrations for me. So I had three students who did all the illustrations in this book, Critters Don't Litter. Now, they wanted me to take the characters that I used for Sammy and put them in here, which I did. It has all the statistics that are needed for the state. For children now, from kindergarten to fourth grade, I have a desire to place these in all the elementary schools. And I've thought, a marketing thought, of having a day set aside where they would have a Critters Don't Litter day, teaching children about the importance of not littering. My idea was, is to have each child bring something to throw down on the floor, and then have them all pick it up using plastic bags. But I need to have help. I need to know how I can implement this into the community. I have stickers called, "Please Don't Litter," and I'll show them to you, too. Please Don't Litter. These can be put on garbage bags or garbage cans. I have the smaller ones also, same thing. And then I have to have, I have to introduce you to somebody, because he's the one that started this whole thing, okay? So I have a company in California who has the puppets like this, these are hand puppets, and I have to be very, very careful, because if I take these out, people really think they're... And Sammy, you're not as... Yeah, he's scared. So these also can be purchased by teachers if they are going to be teaching about Critters Don't Litter. So that is my dream. I've been working on this for two and a half years now. I have the books, I have all of these, and I also have posters that can be put up in offices, windows, whatever. So I need your brains to figure out how in the world we could implement this. Now, I have talked with people in Nashville, and they said, "Go to the commissioners, ask them for your help." So that's what I'm doing.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment, please?
Yes.
I met Sammy the Skunk. I met you, Adele. And so when you were sitting here saying, "I've got someone to meet you," and I'm like, "Sammy's here."
Because they love Sammy.
I love Sammy, yeah, you know. But you've actually come on an evening when most of the school board is here. Dr. Parrott, would you meet with her, please?
And I got some books from Mr. Emmer, I guess NCU one time, and he gave some books to me, and I had given them to our director of elementary education, and she is going to set up a meeting with you, it's just, somebody's been calling off school for the last two weeks.
No, anyway, but I think you'll enjoy. I do have these books available for 12 of you, so I don't know. What I have is the information of how much I have spent on this, how much it would cost. Basically, the books are just $3 and some cents, and they're from Amazon, very, very pleased with what they've done with this. So each, I'll let you pass them down, I'll let you decide who gets what. But I do need your expertise in what I have to do to get these out, because I really believe it's valuable. I have, for years, despised litter on highways, thinking to myself, what can be done? No, it's not going to be a cure-all, but if we can start with the little children and then continue on, they would teach their children, and so forth, and so forth. So there you go. No complaints.
Mr. Scott.
Thank you. And Adele, I appreciate you coming forward. Recycling does need to get out into our county, further into our county, and you're correct in saying that education is the key, and especially, you've got to start small, and throwing garbage on the ground, and teaching them to, you know, take the time to bend over and get it, is just, I applaud you for this, and I'm excited for you, so...
Well, I'm so happy that you know Sammy.
I'm tickled, I really am. But yeah, thank you for bringing that to us.
Commissioner McCamey?
I just wanted to say, I had met Ms. Roberts at the show in, yes, ma'am, can't believe you forgot me. But I was getting ready to throw Tim under the bus, Dr. Parrott, because I had brought him the same information, because I told you I would, so I did, so, but I appreciate Dr. Parrott doing that, and he's the man that you, that's the man you need to talk to.
Now, do you need my business card? I'll give him the business card.
That's all, thank you, Chairman.
This is all exciting, folks. I mean, to me, you know, I've worked on it for so long, and I just need help, that's all.
Ms. Roberts, are you talking about financial help?
Pardon, dear.
Any financial help, is that, are you asking?
Yeah, I do need financial help. On my, well, I do, yeah.
Well, the reason I ask, Mayor, I know we just applied for a grant through the litter program, and it was basically for education, so could any of that litter grant money be used to offset some of this expense that she's went through?
Wonderful, wonderful. Now, that's what I'm here for, folks. If you want to give me some money right now, I'm sorry.
Hold on, Ms. Roberts. Ms. Roberts?
I can definitely...
Hold on, I was saying, you've got two more commissioners that'd like to speak with you. Go ahead, Mayor.
I can definitely meet with her, Commissioner McCamey, and we haven't applied yet, so our deadline for application is January 31st, but we are working in the areas with the highest litter pickup by volume. We're working with those schools, like we did a puppet show up at Briesville on this. We've already reached out to Lake City Elementary, Lake City Middle School, Briesville, and Dutch Valley, and the principals there are going to work with us on different contests for education, and this sounds like it fits right in there, and we may be able to solve this sooner rather than later, and get Sammy into those schools to help be part of that education component.
Thank you. Commissioner Warfield?
Ms. Roberts, could you step forward just a moment? I have an opportunity for you. I teach high school lag. We do recycling for Anderson County High School. One of the things we do is called building our American communities. It's where I take my high school kids, and we go into the elementary schools, and we teach about different things. Litter and recycling is actually one of them, and I think that's a huge partnering opportunity to have the high school kids, sometimes it would be during the day, sometimes it'd be in the after-school program, that we actually go in, we teach, and we educate the elementary kids. But this kind of goes right in with what we're actually doing right now with recycling. So at your convenience, if you want to call me, I'll give you my card, if you can let me know when's a good time to meet with you, and I think this is a huge opportunity to go ahead and involve the schools and involve the litter grant, too. I think it's truly a win-win situation.
Now, do you want to run my text right there?
Yes, ma'am.
If you can give you a $100 bill.
A $100 bill, no, I'm not doing that. I did that in New York to a waiter by accident. I made it's Christmas.
Oh, dear. Thank you. Thank you so much, girl. Appreciate this.
Commissioner Meredith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Keep Anderson County beautiful. If you need to make contact with the mayor, he may have the chairman of that group, if they handle most of this case. Thank you.
Any other citizens to appear? This has been a great time for the citizens to come forward, and I just want everybody to know at home and here that we always welcome public input. With that being said, next, we'll go to approval and correction of the agendas. First consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is regular agenda.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I had distributed to all of the commissioners a request to add to the agenda the annual three-star requirement. The Commissioner Meredith's team was so gracious as to remind me about if we could add that to the agenda.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? And this will be under the mayor's report. Commissioner Mead?
I just have another request.
Okay, all right. That one passed, so we're doing that under the mayor's report. Commissioner Mead?
Yeah, I'd like to add, either to our echo in reports from committees or new business, the audit committee report.
Let's put that under reports from committees, and that will be E.
Pardon me, I'm speaking, I'm a little nervous.
Yeah, I understand. We have most, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That one's been added. Commissioner Warfield?
Mr. Chairman, the school board is here this week. I'd like to move item 8G of the law directors' resolution honoring Anderson County School Board Week, make that be item 4A. I don't know if there's any kids here or not, but I know the school board members, they might like to get on, too, so I'll make that as a motion, please, sir.
Sir.
I have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any other changes? Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, we were handed a letter...
Mr. Chairman, we were handed a letter tonight by one of our commissioners. And sad to receive the letter, but I think we should make it a part of the agenda. This is from Commissioner Whitey Hitchcock. So I make a motion that we add this to the agenda as presented.
Second.
Where do you want to put it, Commissioner?
Wherever you think it would be accommodating. Let's say...
New business.
New business.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
As amended.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? Commissioner Wondell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Fritz made a motion earlier about moving the recommendation to solid waste. I seconded it. I understand Commissioner McCamey is going to bring it up to solid waste, but I just thought we should disposition the motion or take action on it, either one.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And that was to accept the motion or disposition it?
To accept the motion to send it to solid waste.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the resolution going to be read by Commissioner Emmerich for the school board.
Thank you, Chairman.
While he's going down there, I just want to say this is a rare moment when we have both boards together. And we really work well together, at least I think so. And I really appreciate the school board.
All the school board members, if you could come up here, please. Dr. Parrott? Come on up here. Come on up here. All right. If you'll stand right here. Okay. If you'll allow me to read this, please. Resolution honoring the Anderson County Board of Education and recognizing School Board Appreciation Week, January 21st through the 27th, 2018. Whereas, an excellent public education system is vital to the quality of life in Tennessee communities and to the overall economic development of the state. And whereas, at the heart of any successful school system is the dedicated men and women of the local school board who devote countless hours to the students they serve. And whereas, the school board members represent a tremendous resource as local decision-makers who diligently work to overcome the challenges of a changing world on unlimited resources while providing students with the services and opportunities needed for a quality education. And whereas, school board members strive to ensure that every student achieves their maximum ability, graduates high school, prepares for college, and is ready for their chosen career within the workforce. And whereas, board members support and appreciate the efforts of students, educators, and administrators whose diligent efforts have led to Tennessee having the highest graduation rate on record. And whereas, the men and women of Anderson County Board of Education are elected by the people to make difficult but sound decisions appropriate for our community and deserve recognition and continued thanks for countless volunteer hours of service and dedication to the students of Anderson County. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Anderson County Board of Commissioners meeting this 21st day of January, 2018, that we honor and are extremely grateful for the outstanding accomplishments of our local Board of Education and its devoted membership consisting of Chairman John Burrell, Joe Williams, Teresa Portwood, Dale Cantrell, Andy McCamey, Scott Gillenwaters, Dawn Bell, and Glenda Langenberg. Did I do that okay? Okay, all right. Be it further resolved that we officially recognize and declare January 21st through the 27th, 2018, as School Board Week in Anderson County to commend the men and women of Anderson County School Board for their tremendous success and continued devotion to the students of Anderson County.
As Chair of the Board of Education, it's been a pleasure to work with the Commission for the last couple of years. You all have been great to us. And we have tried to provide you all with a quality education for all the students of Anderson County. Got a great board to work with, and the Commission has been great to us. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, all.
You know, that 97% graduation rate is very phenomenal. Thank you very much. Next, we have the elections. Nominating committee report by Chairman Alderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had one appointment to the Veterans Advisory Board. Commissioner Scott made a motion to select Michael Vandragovich to serve, seconded by Commissioner Mead, and passed for a full commission with a recommendation of approval, and I so moved.
Second.
I have a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
We had an appointment to the Civil Service Board, and Commissioner Warfield made a motion, excuse me, and seconded by Commissioner Yeager to forward the full commission, Ms. Fay McCoy, as to serve, and I so moved.
Second.
I have a motion, second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Director reflect, one no. Next, Director of Schools.
Thank you, Chairman Isabel. And I got your name right tonight. It was kind of rough last month. But first of all, I want to take this opportunity to thank the Commission for what you did tonight. The Board of Education is... I'm just so honored to work for them. And I can tell you this, their number-one priority is to make sure our students have the tools they need to be successful in not only in school but after school in a career. And I am just blessed to work with this group of individuals. And they are truly, truly about every student every day. So thank you for that. Just a few things to kind of let you know about some things. First of all, Anderson County Schools, we will be receiving Read-to-be-ready grants this summer. And what these grants are, these are grants that we can use in K-1 and 2 to bring students in in the summer, not only to pay for students, but for the teachers to be there, but actually pay for them to go on field trips, to pay for supplies. And I am honored to say Anderson County will be receiving $217,000 worth of grants this summer. So as we talk about extending the school day and extending the school year, this is a way where these students will be able to go to school four weeks in the summer. We don't have to worry about... Forgive what I'm going to say. We don't have to worry about state testing. We don't have to worry about this, that, and the other. What we do is we have fun learning. We put... These teachers put the fun back into academics. And last year, we had two schools that did it. We had Grand Oaks Elementary School and we had Norwood Elementary School. This next year, we're going to have Grand Oaks Elementary, Norris Elementary, Norwood Elementary, Claxton Elementary, and Andersonville Elementary has partnered with Fairview Elementary, and they will be doing that together. So this is, when we talk about the 360-degree child, these students will have a great time. And it will help them in any type of reading that they need to do in the summer. So we're excited about that. The other thing I wanted to... I hope you read the report. As we look at what the state has allowed us to do with state testing, I wanted to just give you all a little snapshot of what we had to deal with this year about the things that the testing data that was not right. And for just one of them I'll bring up. We have to have 95% of our students take the ACT. Well, when we got our data, we knew that these students took the ACT. We had the scores in our hand. But the state said, "Well, you all did something wrong." As you always know, that happens. But we had to go back and do a... We had to go back and show them. So out of that, we had 63, 64 students. Out of that 60 of them, we come back and they said, "Oh, yeah, what you sent us was the right thing." So those are just a few things. Another thing, we had students that were supposedly took a test. They said the test was invalid. But then, when we got the quick scores, there was a quick score for the student. There was T-VOS, which is a growth score for the student. But then again, it didn't count for us. So there's a lot of misconceptions out there about the data. And I can tell you this, we moved Andrea Russell from the high school, Anderson County High School, to be our data coach. And she has done a tremendous job. And she's digging into this data, and she's working with the state. So I would like to say that it's going to get better. We'll see. We should be getting test results back from our EOC for the fall and by the end of January. So we hope to make sure that we have those tests and they're correct. But we want to make sure that... We don't mind being judged on the data, but we just want the data to be correct. Another thing that, just to say, is tomorrow, we will have our teacher depot. As you know, we've started that. This is... We're in our first year and really getting cranked up for that. So from 4:00 to 6:00 tomorrow, any teacher in Anderson County Schools in Clinton City that needs to come and get some supplies to go in their classroom will be open. We had a group, a company that donated over 400 backpacks to our teacher supply closet. We have companies that really, on a daily basis, are calling us and saying, "Hey, I've got these 24 chairs. Do you want these chairs?" And we put them up there, and the teachers take them. So we're really excited about that. We've got some things planned for this summer that we will be doing to make sure that we continue that success. And the other thing is, you know, our board was recognized last month as a Board of Distinction in the state of Tennessee. And that doesn't come without a lot of work. And it is great to know that over the past almost 20 years, every year, this board goes through and they do all of the things they need to do to be that Board of Distinction. And there's not a lot of school boards in the state of Tennessee that go through, though. So again, thank you for your support for the students of Anderson County. I hope you were looking at some of the tweets that they were doing, some of the videos that they did to help me try to call off school. So I got to go out today and take some gift cards that I had to pay for out of my own pocket, but that was good. But another thing to finish, we have our Teachers of the Year. Every year, we recognize them. And you'll be getting a report next month on our Teachers of the Year. We had three regional teachers that we went out today and celebrated them. But I don't want to say it today on air until we get everything in line. But you'll be hearing that next month. So any questions?
Commissioner Creasy?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Parrott. And I enjoyed your report, as usual, and you did an excellent job. And I was wondering if you could explain to our audience, the commissioners, and those at home, and especially the parents of students, the new program that you mentioned in your report, the Eureka Math curriculum.
Oh, yes, sir.
Could you give us some input on that for everyone?
Yes, sir, Mr. Creasy. We work with a nonprofit called Instruct Partners out of Nashville. And we really and truly win the... Two years ago, when the state adopted new math curriculum and math textbooks, really, there wasn't a math textbook out there that fit the curriculum. And you don't want to spend $400,000 to $500,000 on curriculum when you're not going to use it, when it doesn't match the state standards. And so we spent last year, really and truly, the instructional team spent last year, along with teachers, doing some pilot programs with Eureka Math. Eureka Math comes out of the state of New York. And it's... If you look at the research, it's one of the best quality curriculums that bar none. And the best thing about it is it's free. It's an open-source curriculum. Now, what you have to do is you have to buy... You can either copy... You can either copy all the material or you can buy the books through our company, which is called Tennessee Books Company. So we started with second through fifth grade. And once we got to looking into it, we said, "You know, if we're going to do this, we're going to do it right." So the board approved us to take money out of undesignated funds. And we bought a math curriculum for K-5. And that Eureka Math, and I think you're going to see some real growth from it. It is very intense. Our students will have to really and truly work hard. And there's some gaps in there. But the biggest thing that's going to help us is our teachers had been struggling to find the necessary resources every day to teach those new standards. And this lays it out in a chronological order. It's got tests in it. It's got summary sheets. It's also, you can go to their website, and it's got videos on how to teach that math. So we're really excited about that. We believe it's going to really push our students to the next level. So thank you, Mr. Creasy, for asking about that.
Mr. Wondell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Parrott, just very quick comments. Reading through the report, I noticed that the Anderson County School staff, students raised $10,113.85 in donations for the Little Ponderosa. I just wanted to bring that up and say thank you and thank the school board and the staff and the students for doing that. Also, I was at the Anderson County Clinton game this last week, I guess it was. Can't remember. But I really appreciate how Anderson County Schools recognize Shelley Sexton and their family. I thought that was done very tastefully and classy. And it's well-deserved, obviously, for Ms. Sexton. She's a great individual, and the family is a great family. Third thing, Dr. Burrow made a comment. I never disagree with Dr. Burrow on most occasions, but this one I do. He made the comment, he said, "The school board tries." I think the school board does. I don't think there's any... I understand what his point was. Make every effort, but I think you're past trying, sir. I think you have the board, Dr. Parrott, the staff, the teachers. It's just tremendous at the level of education our kids are getting. And I really thank you from the bottom of my heart for that. So thank you, Dr. Parrott. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Doc.
Thank you.
Sure.
I knew the school board was going to be here tonight. I'm wearing a... Well, I'm wearing a tie that one of the best friends I ever had in my life gave me about 20 years ago. School Superintendent J.V. Sailors, who left Anderson County and went to Nashville and later passed away. He gave me this tie after a golfing trip one weekend. And I treasure it. So I wore it tonight in honor of the memory of J.V., or I call him Dr. J, and the school board.
County Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The one item that is under the county mayor's report, the resolution to change the name from holding facility to the animal shelter, we moved that to the operations committee and dealt with that there where it was added. So the only thing I have is the annual motions that I request. These have to do with our ability to be successful with our engagement with the Tennessee Three-Star Program. I distributed to you all the following two motions. And also, I submitted the debt policy to all of you all. The requirement is that you annually review that. And I make sure that it's distributed to you and that if you have any questions, we talk about that. You've had that for the last few days. So if you have any questions, I'm here. I know Natalie is well-versed in this now, so she can answer any questions as well. If there are no questions, the first motion I'm requesting is a motion that Commission has accepted and reviewed with the county mayor. Anderson County's debt management policy currently on file in the comptroller of the Treasury's office.
I have a motion, second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And the next motion is a motion acknowledging that Commission and the county mayor are aware that prior to the issuance of debt, an annual cash flow forecast must be prepared for the appropriate fund. appropriate fund and submitted to the comptroller's office.
I have a motion.
Don't move.
Motion second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. That's all I have on my report. Oh, yes.
Mayor Frank, on November the 20th, County Commission meeting, I asked the question about Jason Stettler, I think that's how you pronounce his name, his appointment to the Anderson County Economic Board, if he was part of the group that filed the suit against... For the ouster suit.
Right.
I think you had emailed commissioners and saying you want to bring that back up and talk about that, because I think that was... If I'm not mistaken, the ouster suit cost the citizens of Anderson County $75,000, and he was part... In fact, he was part of that group that actually filed that suit. Is this not correct?
Yes. You asked me, and I said I did not believe so. And then afterwards, I asked Mr. Burge, and he responded that yes, he was part of that.
Any other questions of the mayor? Mr. Wondell.
Mayor, I just wanted to bring you up to speed. I thought you were going to come and talk to us, and I know you've got a lot going on. So ACUB issue that our District One, District Three area with the outfalls, sewers, pump stations, I guess.
Right.
I did get a call from one of the board members at ACUB.
Yes, sir.
And he enlightened me that, same thing you said, basically. But they are doing a retrofit, and it should be done, depending on the weather, within the next two weeks. So Commissioner Fritz and commissioners in District Three area, where those pump stations are, Mountain View and the others there, they're underway now, and hopefully, this retrofit will fix it. And also, the Anderson County Water Authority indicated, I thought it'd be a good idea, Mr. Chairman, not sure about the rest of the commissioners, but to have the AC... Anderson County Water Authority, I keep wanting to go Anderson County Utility Board, but the Anderson County Water Authority come occasionally and give us an update on things so we know what's going on. Not to say that there's anything being hidden, but it would be good to know what's going on in our district. So when we get those calls, we know what's coming down the road or so. So I just wanted to share that with you, Mayor.
Yes, and I apologize. I was going to mention that under the Operations Committee, so that my confusion there. Yes, I did reach out to the Water Authority. I also talked to one of the board members, Ricky Rose. He verified all the same stuff. I know he called you as well. The Water Authority is going to provide a report, and I think they are going to do that on a regular basis and distribute that to county commissioners. So anyone that has any questions kind of about their status, projects they're working on, where they're at, you all will have that. So they will have that. And then also, on the status of the... You wanted a report on the status of the Glen Alpine Convenience Center proposed location that the county currently has a option for. We're going to put together... I've talked to the commissioners in that district, Commissioner Warfield, Commissioner Emmert, as well as the chairman. We're going to put together another task force meeting so that we'll all be on the same page and give a status update. We are in the process of a survey. I did meet with Tim Thompson, the head of the Anderson County Economic Development Association, out there on site on Friday, to meet with T.DOT, to make them aware of some of the concerns that citizens and commission had with regard to increased traffic flow in that area. They offered a suggestion, so I'm going to bring that in to that meeting. And then also, they're going to be emailing me their suggested map to distribute to commissioners. And then I'll be able to update everyone as well, where we are with the status of the environmental and the core drilling and all of that. If anyone has driven by there, they've probably seen some flags that are lined up there. We ask for everything to be marked, from water to gas. That particular mark right now is fiber that's actually on that line. And then you probably... Commissioner McCamey, Jeff Tribalka, reached out to him about getting permission to BushHog, one of the areas where we're looking. It would be kind of adjacent to the proposed location. And they're going to BushHog out there so that I can notify you all. You can go out there on site, get a better look at where the current proposed location for that would be.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Aldrich.
Just one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Do we need to vote to approve the resolution on the animal shelter?
I submitted it through Operations, so it should come through as a motion there. We voted on it there. So however you all want to handle it, I just had missed the Operations deadline, so I went ahead and added it to the mayor's report so it would be published on the agenda.
Operations accepted it.
Yes.
I move we approve.
Second.
I have a motion second. Any discussion? Does everybody understand what we're voting on?
Right.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Hold on a second.
Yes, sir.
One quick thing. If you're going to BushHog up there, are they going to put out any survey and flags or stakes to kind of give us an idea when we do go up there? They can... It don't have to be precise.
Okay.
Say anything about... It's kind of proposed to put in this general type of area?
Well, what we're doing, and I addressed it at Operations, we didn't want to go have to do drilling on the entire site. So in order to try to cost save, we're getting an excavator to do some initial look in order to get the best location, so that we're not paying the steep environmental fees for the whole parcel of land. And so I can have them mark the general area, but you will also see it, they're going to put up flags for every area that they core drill. So you'll kind of get an idea just from that. You'll be able to see that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Commissioner Wondell.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to recap the resolution we passed so the folks at home know what we did. We just said we changed the name. I'd like to say we changed the name from Holding Facility to Anderson County Animal Shelter. Just a informational piece.
A lot of confusion in the public, so this helps clarify that, yes.
Didn't want anybody to think we named it.
Yes.
Commissioner Emmert.
Do we not already have a survey on this?
A...
On the parcel that we're talking about?
I believe it's from 1995, so...
Is that... No, that's the one Clayton. Is that the one that they did?
Yeah.
Can we not use their... Well, they were in another area.
Yeah.
Pardon?
That's just the boundary survey.
Okay.
We've got a purchase contract on that parcel by meets and bounds. We're buying what's on that survey. So spend money on another survey if you want to, but what's in that purchase contract you see is defined as meets and bounds. That's from that survey. We're buying what's on this former survey. Nothing more, nothing less.
Well, because there is water there and where we're going to locate it, we wanted to make sure that we're getting all of this absolutely correct. And then we have a... Just a proposal to widen the road there in order to possibly address any concerns the citizens have on more traffic. And so we want a little work done on that front part with that survey, so.
Okay. Any other questions to the mayor? Thank you. Paul Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you. I have just a couple things for your attention tonight. Does anybody have anything on any of the items listed under Item A of Contract Approvals? Item B is the Toyota manufacturing suit. Anderson County has prevailed in that tax valuation case. I've talked about that several times before County Commission. Item C is another case the county has prevailed in. That's the Tiffany Allen case. Item D is, I asked permission last month to file suit against a canine kennel down in Florida. We did so, and we resolved that with full compensation to the county. The Blockhouse Valley update, I've sent you an email on that. I promised you before that I would ask for permission to go forward with each step of that remediation project. I'm here before you tonight to ask permission to move forward with the final step. That's the wet weather pond that's in the very back. I've sent you the design on that. That's a solar-powered aerator that's going to be put back there to try to stir up the water, move all the heavy metals to a filtration system. We're hoping that will work. The design studies show that it will work. The cost estimate is $38,011. We have that money budgeted. It does not take any additional appropriation from this body, but I would like permission to move forward with that last phase tonight.
Hold on just a second. Commissioner Wondell's had his name up. And it may be previous.
Yeah, it was previous. Just continue on with the current business. I'll come back to it. Nothing urgent.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Does everybody understand what we're voting on?
Yes.
Does anybody need clarification? Want to say that again, Jay?
It's just permission to move forward with that last phase of the remediation project that's on that pond at the very rear of the property.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, Item F is the harassment policy amendment. As I told you today, I'll be bringing forth a draft to Operations and let you take a look at that. If anybody's got any ideas, please submit those to me, and we'll fill in some of the gaps of that policy. But I'll bring that to Operations. I need no action tonight on that issue. Anything else I can do for any of you?
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, Jay, I know you mentioned it, but I just want to thank you and Property Assessor Johnny Alley for the work in the Commission, for the support. Mayor, too, I think she was a part of this, but that lawsuit with Toyota, that's a big deal. And I just say thank you, Property Assessor Alley and the mayor. I appreciate what you guys did.
I appreciate your kind words, but I can tell you right now, there's no way we would have prevailed in that lawsuit. Number one, without the support of County Commission. But without Johnny Alley and Billy Brown on our side, we would have been in problems with that case. But hats off to those two gentlemen and the entire Property Assessor staff. If you looked at that case, several of them gave sworn affidavits in the case. They were very instrumental in that case for the county, but I do appreciate your comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd say Johnny's daddy's smiling down on him.
That's exactly right.
Mitch Cock. You're next, actually.
Yes, just for the rest of the Commission, because I might not get a chance to say it again, I want to thank Jay for hanging in there for twelve, at least twelve years with Blockhouse Valley. That how long you been, Law Director?
Yeah, but I was working on that project long before Law Director.
Right.
Law Director. In fact, it was placed on my desk day one.
John Byrd hung in there.
He sure did.
And they haven't lost sight of the big picture. And I hope that as the years go on, that you commissioners and new ones will keep in mind that the grand idea was, with a couple of hundred acres, to develop that in a way that would enhance the lives of the citizens of Anderson County. And where it's located, dead center, which is wonderful. And part of that was, when we built the jail, the idea of work release. And we have been able to manage that population, and Paul White's done a good job of that and Mark. And so now, we have a facility to have a true work release that brings money to... Into the county and for people to do their time while they're doing worthwhile work and can actually, for some of them, learn a trade, whether it's heavy equipment or anything. So it's a wonderful... It's a wonderful opportunity if we don't lose track of it. We have the place to do it. We got the facility to do it. Mary Ann Young can be involved in that and expand the wonderful program she's done in the jail to the outside, and we can do some wonderful things that other people in the state would like to see. But if you lose track and just see it as, are we going to do this testing or not, and who's got to say so or not, I think it'll be an opportunity lost. So keep your eye on the prize. Thanks, Jay.
Very well said, Commissioner Hitchcock, and I do appreciate your work on that. Also, the thing we do have is a vision. We've solved this problem. It's taken twenty years to do it. John Byrd sent you an email today. I hope you read that. He's invited all of us down there this spring to take a look at what he's doing. And it's some awesome research for the kids, and we'll keep moving forward. I sent you a shared link over the weekend. If you want to, it'll show that map that we produced of all the different activities we hope to someday return to our citizens and have that available for our students to learn about outdoor research and for youth recreation, and certainly for our citizens to utilize. But anyway, great project, and I'm glad to be a part of it. Any other questions that I can help you with?
Thank you, Chairman. Should we vote on the resolution honoring the school board? Have we voted on that?
No, we did not.
And not? Shouldn't we need to vote on that? Motion to approve that.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Chairman.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
We're going to have a ten-minute recess.
Now, help me out. Are you in the primary? Are you like a Republican, Democrat? Democrat?
Republican.
Okay.
Before you get started today on Ask Your Neighbor, one of the people that called in was talking about how we vote on blocks and they don't get to see that. And I talked to Brian and he's going to try to do something where it'll go on the big screen, so the people at home will be able to see exactly what we're voting on. So that's one of the things. And then the other thing was, was we had somebody call in about speaking into our microphones and speaking a little bit louder. So I think everybody's done a good job that tonight. Thank you.
Would you like me, when I get to those groups, to read off the line item as it reflects the fund and the amount? Or just wait until the next meeting to?
Yeah, let's just wait till the next meeting.
Very good. Alright. Good evening. Getting started with the cash and fund balance report. I submitted the information as of December 31st, so that's halfway through the fiscal year. Starting with the general fund, the fund balance reserves and the unassigned fund balance, it's $4.1 million. In the restricted fund balance, it's $1.3 million. The committed fund balance is $2.3 million. Assigned fund balance is $307,000. The non-spendable fund balance is a little over a million dollars. So that gives us a total in the general fund of fund balance reserves of just over $9 million. Looking at the cash balance, you'll see that as of December 31st, the cash balance is $6.8 million. That's significantly higher than the last two fiscal years. In talking to the trustees office, they collected $2 million more than last year, and we're thinking that that is just property taxes being received earlier than the typical past trends. I don't think we've got $2 million in additional revenue coming in. But that's a favorable trend nonetheless. I will say that the cash balance, that this does not reflect the Oak Ridge Mall TIF abatement. This is, we're in the first year of what that abatement is and in calculating that. And as I have that information approaching March, or April 30th, I will bring that information to you. Looking at the other funds, you'll see that the restricted fund balance, which is a legal restriction, is presented. The unrestricted, unrestricted fund balance is also presented. And then the cash balances. And cash increased on all of the funds with the exception of the Highway Fund 131 and Channel 95 269 Fund. Also supplementing this information, it was a series of graphs. As of December 2017, it shows the general fund cash trends. Next to it, it shows the general fund actuals year-to-date. So the blue bar is actual revenues compared to past years. The orange bar is the actual expenditures compared to past years. And then the gray bar is the deficit year-to-date, which is relatively favorable, at least compared to last year. And then at the bottom, the general fund unassigned fund balance trends. It's comparable to recent years. And I will say, from a financial perspective, I caution it is too low for contingencies and unforeseen events. And then to date, the appropriations from the general fund unassigned fund balance, pending the budget amendments that are in tonight's package, it will be drawing down the unassigned fund balance $538,000 for the fiscal year-to-date. And again, that's through December. Any questions on the cash and fund balance report?
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Natalie, good, good report. I like these graphs. The general fund actuals year-to-date as December, you covered that well. But surplus deficit in 2017, what, what do you, what, what makes up that $4 million deficit?
So, the information that's being presented is just the actual, so the orange, let me back up. The blue bar is actual revenue that we had received from July 1 through December 31 to compare it to previous years. Then you'll see last year, that orange bar, the expenditure bar, jumped up significantly. Just offhand, I know in the first six months of last fiscal year, we had the IT event that had a significant expense tied to it. I don't know offhand if there had been legal fees associated in the first six months, but we had a couple of unusual events, I believe, that were unique to last year that had been relatively nonexistent, so to speak, compared to previous years. So as of December, we were operating with a deficit that was larger than any of the recent years before.
So that's not to say we lost money. That's just to say that we had that, we used that much more of our surplus to operate, basically.
That's right. Right. And I think what we will find is in January, when that, when the cash comes in, we're gonna, we're gonna see that trend start to, to turn. But again, we approved a $300,000 deficit for this fiscal year. Right? So if, if we start to have a surplus, I'll be very surprised, but that would be great if it happened.
Thank you. Good explanation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Okay. And then also in your materials, the Budget Committee in their meeting in January approved the guidelines, the schedule and the forms that will be used in this next budget cycle. So that's more for your information. I'll be happy to answer any questions. As of today, we completed the two informational meetings, and there was good attendance. So with that, I will move on to the, the budget amendments. Group one was in the consent agenda, so moving on to, yes?
Commissioner Scott?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I had attended the informational meeting this afternoon, and it, it was very, very good. I appreciate the fact that you took the time to not only explain to the departments how to complete their budget packets, but you elaborated on why things are going to be where they fall and so forth. And I appreciate it very much. I got a lot out of it.
I appreciate you attending. Commissioner Smallridge attended the one when we were being called out for snow. That informational meeting, there wasn't a lot of dialogue. I think we were all kind of preoccupied about getting out of the courthouse before we got snowed into it. But I appreciate those that attended and across the county. I think we're gonna find this budget cycle even more challenging than the one we found last year, unfortunately. So it'll be interesting to see what, what, how the conversation goes over the next six months. But thank you. Group, Commissioner Wondell, did you have a comment?
Yes, real quickly, Mr. Chairman. I, I like these guidelines for 2018, 2019. And again, I understand they're just guidelines, but number two item under guidelines, the number one bullet I love, the property tax rate will not be increased. I just wanted to read that out loud.
We can increase it. I just, I'm from the, I just don't think it's likely to be increased. I'd love for it to, oh, from a financial perspective, we'd love for it to increase.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Sorry. Okay. Group two appropriations, school requiring commission approval by board vote. Submitting for your approval individually or as a group?
Have motion, save approval as a group. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion?
A board vote.
Batteries. Andy, just go ahead and record it. I did.
While he's fixing that, Brian was able to get the summary of the budget amendments reflected on the screen for the general public, so they can see now what the groups look like.
Is Andy showing that at home?
I can see it up here. That's true. That's right.
That's correct.
Good, good comment.
Okay, 16.
Motion passes.
Moving on to group five appropriations, non-school, seeking a commission approval by board vote.
Motion to second, any discussion? Go to the board and vote. Commissioner Hitchcock?
Which group is this now?
Number five.
That's only one item, isn't it, the emergency management agency?
That's right.
I had one, I had a question. I don't know if it's for now or later. I'm kind of lost working two things. That Tufo Mole company do mold inspection, where are they located? That's what I was trying to find out. Where is Tufo Mole as a company located? Are they in Anderson County is the question?
I don't believe so. I think they're from Knox, but I can go down and report.
I don't know if they're, what the status is here in Anderson County, but I know at one time, Ed Sobek was in that business over on Midway, on Midway, and they might have merged with another company bought out or whatever. But I believe those services are available local and you might want to check on that if we have to do it again. The, the contact though is Ed Sobek, S-O-B-E-K.
We're voting on group five.
Right. Group five appropriations, non-school, it's for $3,350.
Board vote.
Board vote.
Jeff, if you can do it back there, my votes yes.
Mr. Chairman, I made while we're waiting, and I was trying to think of how to say this, but I am so glad that we have hired a technical person to staff such as Brian and, and his staff. And we have them on board, and I think we're saving a lot of money and we're getting expert service by having them on our payroll. And I think that was one of the best moves we've made in a good while.
I agree.
To go along with Commissioner Crease's comments, which are very good, when I talk to Brian, here in the next 30 days, we're looking at saving, he's gonna save the county $15,000 to $17,000 per month in addition to what he's already done. So, done an excellent job.
Motion passes.
Moving on to group six, transfers, non-school, seeking commission approval by board vote.
Let's go to the board and vote. It was? Oh, yes. Too far away. Motion passes.
Moving on to group seven appropriations, general fund unassigned fund balance, seeking commissions approval by board vote, either individually or as a group.
Have motion second, go to the board and vote.
Seven appropriations from the general fund unassigned fund balance. There are four of them.
And group seven covers the mayor, on the court?
Yes.
Buildings and ground, finance department, and information technology.
Right.
Commissioner Emmert?
We're talking about the renovations at Daniel Arthur.
That's the next group.
So, seven.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's, that's my mistake. These are the appropriations, general fund. I'm talking about group seven, for a total of $115,210.
Okay, alright.
Sorry for the confusion.
Group seven is for the $115,210.
Yes, sir.
And that was items I just spoke of, so that our people at home will know what we're voting on. Okay.
Motion passes.
Okay, so what should read, group eight miscellaneous? I talked to Chairman Isbell about if we could table the EMS 118, $500,000 budgetary action. The Finance Committee met prior to this meeting, so I'd like to, if we could, table that one and talk about it at the same time that we talk about the Finance Committee, if, if that's agreeable to commission.
I have a motion, so move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Motion passes.
So the three remaining miscellaneous budget amendments are all tied to the Daniel Arthur renovation. I'll be happy to answer any questions, but they are coming from different funds. And I will say, the last one for the chiller came to commission without a recommendation for approval. It was, I think, to allow for time for estimates on that amount for the $80,000 on the chiller.
Can you clear the board for discussion?
Talking about chiller, there was a chiller down in the other section of the building. We're looking, the $80,000 is a complete HVAC unit.
Okay.
You've got a, an email that was sent from City Manager Mark Watson and Mayor Gooch, where they have agreed to chip in a sizable amount of money. We're hoping that you will take that money, $40,000, tonight and move forward and allow us to order the HVAC system. That system will take roughly five to six weeks to custom build and get in here. So if we don't pass this tonight, we're stuck waiting till the February meeting. The other thing is, we cannot get in that building and get a CO, a certificate of occupancy, until that building can maintain 68 degrees all the time. So it's not gonna be able to do that without the HVAC unit. But I was very happy to hear the commitment from Oak Ridge, and I think every one of you are too. That was perfect and on time for our current dilemma. Thank you, Oak Ridge.
Commissioner Hitchcock?
Yes, thank you indeed. But without, without a tech in front of us, what we need to do, I believe, is a motion to go ahead and spend that money out of money that's designated for the Daniel Arthur building, or unassigned balance, but we need to take actual money, appropriate it.
Well, I don't think we need to pay right now, Commissioner Hitchcock.
We don't need to appropriate?
We, right now, well, we're, we probably will need to pay in a month or the next month. But if I just have the authority to tell the contractor, hey, we've got the, the money, county commission intends to buy this, we can get this order. The, the order is the, the time issue. And as soon as I can call them tonight and say, order this thing in the morning, we're in business. But we don't have to pay right now. No, the, we have, the contractor is ordering this.
So the motion would be move?
Move forward with HVAC and?
Forward with purchasing the HVAC?
HVAC, and we'll deal with the financial issue in February and March when we get the bill. We won't get a bill on this for another month, maybe even two months. But I, I just want you guys to understand, I want, we want to go on record, if that's your, your pleasure, and move forward with this project. Otherwise, we're sitting there with a, a building that's half-done that we can't occupy until we get?
Well, let me make this motion.
Well, let's get, make the motion to take these up separately. It says a group, and then we'll do them one at a time.
I move we take the items separately?
Motion second, any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye. Motion passes.
I move that, due to Oak Ridge's financial assistance, we ask the law director to move forward with purchasing the HVAC.
Have a motion second, and that is on group eight B3, Fund 171, DRC renovations. It's for an amount of $80,296. And if I'm correct, the email said that Oak Ridge was going to come up with a minimum of $40,000, $20,000 from the discretionary fund, and then $20,000 sometime in April. So that's what we're voting on.
In addition to the regular 30.
In addition to the regular 30.
They're in for probably three times, three times what they, they committed earlier.
And the reevaluation of sales tax position, which is very beneficial.
Any discussion on this motion?
Is this an appropriations, Chairman?
Yes, for the, please.
Well, we still got discussion. Commissioner Emmert?
Yes, Jay, the $80,000, with Oak Ridge doing the 40, we still, we still would ask for the $80,000, and it would be cut, a check would be cut out of the general fund, or how's that gonna work with Oak Ridge gonna?
I would respectfully ask that we allow the $80,000 to be the appropriation on the expenditure line item, and we amend it to allow for the $40,000 coming in to 171 as revenue, so I have a code to receipt it against, with the net on 171 of being the $40,000 for the purchase.
Okay.
Commissioner Scott?
Thank you. I simply wanted it to go on record to say thank you to the city of Oak Ridge, to City Manager Mark Watson, the Mayor Gooch, and, and all of City Council for working with us on this project, and for stepping forward and, and placing this offer. Just thank you very, very much.
Commissioner Warfield? You've already spoke, Commissioner Emmert. Commissioner Wondell?
Thank you.
I think Natalie addressed it, but, you know, we're talking about the $80,296. It's an increase expenditure code of 171-99120-707-DARC, administration of justice building improvements. Then the decrease revenue code, 171-34585, budget restricted for capital project, $80,296. I just want to make sure we're not mixing all these together, because Section B covers three different items. But it sounds like the discussion is just on this specific item here. So, and that's to purchase a quote or a 14-ton, is that correct?
17.
17-ton. So that's changed from 14 tons to 17 tons.
The budget amendment was prepared before I, we had any knowledge of receiving the, the financial assistance from Oak Ridge. So that would be modifying this budget amendment to also, we wouldn't be decreasing the reserves by the $80,000, because we'll be increasing the revenue coming in from Oak Ridge by $40,000. But we will be increasing that Daniel Arthur expense code to be able to move forward with asking the contractors to go ahead and, and get the equipment.
And just for clarification, of that $80,000 HVAC unit itself is less than a quarter of that amount of money. The biggest expense is actually in the ductwork and the labor. And if they can do the interior insulation of the ductwork, it's gonna save probably enough money to do the tile in the foyer.
Very good point. I was fixing to bring that up. Thank you, Tim.
And, and by the way, the handicap, the button does work, so.
We got the power hooked back up.
So, Commissioner Fritz? I'm sorry, Mr. Wondell wasn't done.
You okay, Chuck, if I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Comment, thank you. So, I, I think I seen some numbers earlier. Are we at roughly $706,000 now on that project or something? Is that?
The original contract with Prehn was, I believe, $476,000. We did $30,000 in change orders. And then I believe we originally started with $12,000 for some of the IT infrastructure.
I guess, I guess my question is, we, we budgeted a certain amount of money.
Right.
So, when I see these things come up before us, I see with the code you're taking it out of, we're taking it out of, how are we gonna pay for all these change orders and additional costs? That's my question. And, and I do appreciate the city of Oak Ridge stepping up as well, and the council. Not here to be disrespectful. It's kind of like going swimming. You know, I'm gonna go in about ankle-high, but you're already wet, you might as well go in all the way. So that's where I'm at with it. I just, I just want to know how we're gonna fund it.
Sure. So you're right. So the total with, there was originally $206,000 in change orders. That's when we commissioned last discussed what this looked like. So when the Budget Committee brought, it was deferred to budget. And Budget Committee went through all these itemized changes. And that, what I had proposed at the time was we still had $68,000 of the original $1.4 million capital outlay note that had not been earmarked for any other purchase. So that can be some of the money that's funding these change orders. In talking with Roger Lloyd, we also had the $150,000 appropriation for the jolly roof that needs to be repaired, but it's, he hasn't moved on the RFP. So he was agreeable to uncommit those funds from the jolly roof and recommit them to, to this project. So that's where the funding of this, it's using more of that remaining $300,000 that we had hoped to use for other county capital outlay purchases that's helping to finish the Daniel Arthur renovation.
Can I add just a couple of things on that? To help everyone, that's $70,000 extra from Oak Ridge, okay, 40 plus the 30. A lot of these things that were security-related is coming out of the security litigation tax. And that was a, a large group of everything from the card keys swiped, to the video, to the internet, to anything related to security. We're able to use that funding, which is, we didn't anticipate, but we're able to do that. And then, we're gonna, it looks like, I, I spoke to you all about a meeting we have with Emery Valley. They were not able to meet with us due to some illness, but they're meeting next, this coming Friday with me. And at that point, we don't know what their decision is. We're not pushing them one way or the other. But there's possible savings there of at least $50,000 if we don't have to build the shaft wall, the firewall, which actually is $57,000, and the new smoke and fire alarm system.
What did they have to do?
They, they may be moving into the red brick building that we gave them three years ago. So, but if we keep the, you've heard me talk about this before, if we keep it a dual-purpose building, we will have to build that shaft wall. building, we will have to build that shaft wall, and we'll have to do the $52,000 in smoke and fire detectors that, we may have some savings there, Commissioner Wondell. So those are the other things. Now, Commissioner Isbell mentioned that there is some savings that if you guys choose to, we can have open ductwork. That is a modern concept. I see it a lot in restaurants. That doesn't require the contractor go in there and build all the plumbing chases for the ductwork. The ductwork is painted, it's exposed. I see it quite commonly. I see Commissioner Emmer shaking his head there, and he's in the construction field. So we may be able to save some money, and Chairman Isbell spoke about that. There is significant savings if we go with open ductwork on that county clerk side, not in the courtroom. That's already done. But you would see open ductwork instead of the enclosed, built plumbing chases with drywall around them. So that is a significant savings that we could, if you guys choose to do so, do it that way also. But we can bring that up next month.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Fritz?
You know, just playing the difficult advocate, you know, no offense, Jay, but we keep hearing savings, and savings, and savings, but it's still above the original projected cost. And the former building grounds director, Mr. Bochapp, before he left, he himself admitted that the Daniel Arthur building was a white elephant, and it used to be tore down because it's gonna cost more to fix it than it is to just tear it down and build a whole new building. And that's what we're seeing. We had somebody come in there, supposedly a contractor, give us a despot, and now we're hearing all this stuff coming in, and we're having to keep fixing this, and fixing that, and the floor, the windows, and I even mentioned the windows before we even got started on the thing. And all these things are costing, but they keep coming up, and it's getting more, and more, and more. And I mean, it's just unreal what this building is costing the taxpayers of this county. And when we was told from the very beginning, that it's gonna be more costly just to go ahead and just do away with it, and tear it down, and just build something maybe even new, or find something different, or stay where we was even at. Sure, we continue to add to it, add to it, we look at savings, if you want to say savings, but still, I don't look at it as savings, I just keep looking at it as added expense to the taxpayer.
Commissioner Hitchcock?
Questions being answered.
Commissioner Bee?
I think the thing we have to focus on here is, I'm an engineer, and I want to look at the building. I don't think you can build a building as strong as that one is nowadays. You wouldn't be able to afford one. The other thing we need to realize is that we've got 80% of the work done, we already are contractually obligated to pay for everything we've ordered. Right now, the question is, do we want to have a really nice building that we can use? Or do we want to have a really nice building, but with the exception of a few things, we can't use it at all? I think we need to, I mean, it comes a point where you're already committed, we're already committed to use this building. I think it was a good decision. But we need to do this to keep on schedule, so we don't have to delay, and delay, and delay, because these costs are inevitable. Any use of this building's gonna require this kind of a heating and air conditioning system, or it's can't, you can't get an occupancy permit for it. So I urge you to all support this. Thank you.
Commissioner Emmer?
Thank you, Chairman. Allow me to speak again. I just want to go on record updating that, for example, the job that I'm on right now, I'm dealing with an architect right now, and an engineer, that we are trying to cut things off, because it was, the specs on it was so extreme, that we're trying to dwindle that number down. This is the worst spec job I've ever seen in my life. I have never seen, I can't imagine how you can miss a 17-ton unit. That is unbelievable to me. I can't imagine how you can miss a security system on a whole high-profile area that has judges, guards, prisoners. I don't understand how you can miss a security system, of all things. The flooring, the things to me that are so obvious, I don't, there are ways to go over these, this scope of work, but I think somehow, some way, we're going, well, I'm totally perturbed with Michael Brady right now. I just can't believe that you can miss that much. I understand when you cut the floor and it falls through, but Commissioner Whitehead said, like he said, he'd been under it many times. To give a scope of work is to know the actual project, and that means know it from top to bottom. So the county, I don't know if that gets the city inspectors involved with it a little bit more, or the county inspector involved with it a little bit more, people that are knowledgeable on this, and have the certifications, I just, this was a terrible, terrible scope of work on this job. That's all I was gonna say. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
What we're gonna be voting on, and we'll go to the board and vote, this is actually in Group 8, DRC renovations for $80,296, with contributions from Oak Ridge of $40,000. And what was the rest of your motion?
Does that law director go forward with what he thinks?
Okay. Does everybody understand the motion? Let's go to the board and vote, please.
Next, we'll need to take up, we got a backup, because we just did B3, so let's go back to B1.
Correct. So this is-
Motion to approve.
Any discussion on the motion? Do you need a board vote on that?
Yes, please.
Go to the board and vote. Motion passes.
And then B2.
Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote, please. Commissioner Wondell, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just thought, Mr. Chairman, I'd quickly say, probably doing the citizens injustice, we're looking at $24,150 expenditure, $29,676 expenditure on this next motion we're getting ready to vote on. Those funds are being reallocated from other funds that are currently existing. Is that correct, Natalie?
So this B2 is the same as what I was referring to in B3. This is part of that capital outlay note money, the $1.4 million that had originally been intended for other county capital.
So we're taking the money from another location and gonna use it in this-
For another purpose and using it for this, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Natalie.
Any other discussion? Go to the board and vote, please. Motion passes.
Okay, so we're still tabling the budgetary action for the EMS capital outlay note. So I'd like to move on to the finance committee report. First, let me say, of all three of these resolutions, they, all three have been modified to reflect tonight's meeting date, not the original meeting date for last Tuesday. So that is the only change that you're not seeing in your resolutions, that the county clerk will have in what's executed. So the first agenda item is, there are two bond refundings for the school. You have the resolutions right there in front of you. The first one that ends in 665 is an estimated net savings of $205,000 in the 152 Fund, which is rural and elementary education. The second one is also a bond refunding. The number that ends in 666 is an estimated net savings of $126,000 in Fund 156. These are current refundings, but they, in the finance committee's December meeting, they took the motion to accept the, both of these refundings, so it is now coming to Commission for your consideration and approval.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion in second. Any discussion? Do you need a board vote?
Yes, please.
Go to the board and vote, please.
As a group?
Is this for, yeah, as a group?
Sure.
That's not extending that out.
No, that's right.
It's not extending that loan out, and the school system don't take any of that money out of it. It stays in that fund balance to ensure those.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So now, coming back to the capital outlay note for EMS, and if you'll bear with me, just to offer a little bit of background, Commission referred this to the budget committee, because at last month's meeting, this topic had not gone to the budget committee. So at the, in the budget committee minutes, I'm not gonna read what's in the minutes, but it originally, there was a lot of discussion. It had started at $750,000 for the capital outlay note. That motion did not get a second, so it failed. So now, what the budget committee did approve was the budgetary action that the finance committee was seeking some input on, to approve up to $500,000 for a capital outlay note. So that was the action that the budget committee, I feel in an effort to compromise in meeting the needs for ambulances and the financial concerns, budget committee approved that. So the finance committee met earlier today. And what is being presented at this point in time is a capital outlay note for $400,000. That was included in your package, so you could review the resolution, with the intention of $100,000 of the new revenue stream from the kicker legislation be dedicated to these ambulances that would make up the whole $500,000. Finance committee made a motion, and it passed, to approve the resolution, with the date being modified, and condition on Commission's approval of the long-term financing to repay. That motion passed by voice vote. So what is coming to you, Commission, tonight, for your consideration and approval, is a capital outlay note, it's over five years, at a 1.98% interest rate, for the purchase of, I believe, three ambulances.
And I'd like to make that motion.
Second. Hey, we've got a motion in second. Let me give just a little background on what we did in finance, because Chairman Alwoski's not here. But what the vote that we did there was actually the vote of how it would be funded. So we didn't come with the recommendation that we should do it. It was just that if this committee decides to do it, is how it would be financed.
Right. The financing instrument is what the finance committee approved, not whether or not Commission should or should not move forward with it.
Right. Commissioner Hitchcock?
Thank you. I have to ask a question in order to make a comment. On capital outlay note, how long would it be before the first payment has to be made?
The note, as we bid it out, is set up that there would be an interest payment this current fiscal year, June 1st, and that the first true principal payment would be next budget year in June. So you have a little over a year, in two, three months, four months, to, before the first true big principal payment is due, you would have to have an interest payment this budget year, which is a few thousand dollars, and then there'd probably be an interest payment next December, which would be a few thousand, but the big principal amount is way out.
The analogy I've used for the last almost 12 years on this, on this mission, is being of buying a car, and there's two folks, two categories of people who might buy a new car that already have a car, and they're gonna trade in. And the first one says, I don't have to make a payment the first month, so I've got a free payment, just like the credit union's saying, it's Christmas, skip a payment, you don't skip the interest. So one person takes that money and spends it on a dinner or a party. The other person buying a new car takes that money and pays principal on it before the principal's due. So the EMS is kinda like the first one. And they've come to us, want a half a million dollars, and they're gonna pay it off with this new money they're gonna get. And, because we wouldn't give them the money out of unassigned balance, which is taxpayers' money, we're gonna end up giving taxpayers' money plus interest. So what they're doing now is saying, oh, we're gonna back off of asking you for $500,000. We'll just ask for 400 to be paid out of this Medicaid money. But they're going to use Medicaid money of the first year to kick in. So they are still gonna take $500,000 of that Medicaid money and use it on ambulances. And I despise and detest the devious nature of people coming before this board to find a way that they can convince people that they're getting a good deal, and the EMS is nothing but a used car salesman.
Commissioner Warfield?
I was gonna say the same thing that you did about what happened in finance.
Okay. Commissioner Emmer?
Thank you, Chairman. Natalie, you said the money that they were gonna get from the state, is that the 300 and something thousand, proposed 300 and something thousand?
So I just got the information today of the second quarter's installment of this kicker revenue, and the net amount that the county slash EMS is going to be able to keep for the first and second quarters to date is $176,000. So that was also discussed at the finance committee. The only money of that kicker revenue that has been appropriated is the amount that we have to pay back to the state, which is roughly $40,000 a quarter, to be able to participate in this program. There has not been a budget amendment, or any kind of an appropriation that's come forward yet, on how that other, the remaining revenue, the $176,000 remaining, how that is going to be spent, or intended to be spent. It would ultimately have to come through budget, and then on to Commission. We are putting a cost center, a kicker cost center, so we're tracking this revenue and all the expenses tied to this new legislative revenue stream, because that is the concern, you know, and that's been a lot of discussion at finance and at budget, is there's no guarantee that that revenue stream's gonna continue for the five years to ultimately pay for this note. So it was seen as a way to move forward, given, I mean, this is not new information, the ambulances where they are with respect to their resolution, and try and to get the equipment. But it was also brought up in finance committee, too, we've got the same issue in funding the fire truck. We've got the same issue in funding the sheriff's vehicles. We have not funded one of the 12 that we were anticipating for this fiscal year. That's not on this agenda, not on this action item, but there are significant capital outlay needs and capital outlay requests that are in the need to be funded, and it's when they become a crisis mode, or, I don't wanna say a political topic, but I mean, that's, it's, that's where we are here tonight. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, but we've not had, we've not had the firemen come to us and ask us for money, and then we appropriate it, saying we're gonna get it back, and then, we've never received any money back. And I thought the money that was coming from the state was actually coming back to the general fund, that we were gonna get that back.
And that was part of the original proposal from Nathan? And I don't want to speak for Nathan, I think he's out in the hallway. I think that he's, that's still the concept, that those decisions just haven't been made.
I mean, every time we talk about this, there's a different story. There's a different financing means, there's more money involved, less money now this time, but now we've got more money. I have not heard any way of getting the other money back, and, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Irvin. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Creasy?
Yeah, I made the motion that-
Yeah, I, I made the motion at budget meeting, and I didn't get a second. We really need five ambulances. And I think we've got five that's over 300,000, if I remember correctly. And, and I, and I just think that we're all, our community's getting older. We need medical service. And I just hate to see an ambulance break down coming to get one of our loved ones to rush them to the emergency room. And that, and I think it's up to us to support our ambulance service and to make sure we give a good service to the citizens of this county. All services cost money. It costs to build a park. It costs to build a senior senior, a refuge center, all those things. Those services all cost taxpayer money. And, and I heard that earlier in the meeting about costing the taxpayers. Well, everything we do costs the taxpayers. And, and I'm in very much support of, of five ambulances, but I couldn't get a second. We compromised, and we finally got a second and some discussion, and we passed the vote to buy up to, spend up to 500, up enough for three ambulances. And so I'm very much in support of it, and I hope that my fellow commissioners will look at it the same way I do and will support the motion.
Commissioner Mead.
Ambulance service statewide, the funding of such has been a problem in Tennessee for a number of years. Some of that was precipitated by the fact that at a federal level, Medicaid and Medicare, which is 80% of the ambulance's ser, uh, business, cut the rates that they would pay for the same services dramatically. This is a statewide thing. I'm involved in some committees at a state level that this has been looked at. The fact of matters is it costs more. It costs more for the equipment. It costs more for the training. It costs more for the equipment. The, the time that you can keep stuff before you have to replace it because it has a shelf life has gotten shorter on a lot of things. A vote against this measure is a decision that we're going to substantially reduce the quality of that service in our county. And that's how it is, because it costs certain amount of money to do these things. Now, am I happy with the way this has all come out? Am I happy that Medicare and the feds have, have, I was going to use a different word, but, uh, is probably not appropriate in this meeting? The, I'm not happy with the way a lot of these things have happened. I'm not happy that we've had to run our ambulances until they have 300,000 miles on them and hold them together with duct tape. I'm not, I'm not happy with some of those things, okay? And I realize that I am part of the problem, okay? Because during this seven years that I've been on the commission, I wasn't there saying, "Hey, look, we got, you know, part of it, we didn't recognize the problem. We could have recognized the problem sooner." But we have been, just as the finance director was just saying, we have been not been buying cars for the sheriff's department. We have not been buying fire trucks. We've, we've delayed and delayed and delayed and cut back. And we've come to the point that if we, if we continue now with the cuts and we can continue with the same old equipment, that's going to get to the point where it can't be repaired, we will dramatically reduce the quality of our service. And I'll tell you, and I know from these meetings at a state level, Anderson County has had a very good reputation for how, for our response times and the, and the way that we handle people, the treatment when they're being taken to the hospital. We've got a great reputation. But that reputation is going to start to spin away very quickly if we don't support this.
Commissioner Warfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify, two, two points here. We talked about the mileage, but the mileage is what we set. It, there, there's no state standards that says at 250,000 miles or 350,000 miles, we need to cut these ambulances off. We need to put them up on the shelf. We need to take them to go deals. This is mileage that we set before me, that county commission set. That's number one. Number, number two, these ambulances that they're buying, and if I'm, if, Natalie, correct me if I say something wrong, these ambulances are basically just a shell. They're not equipped with anything at all. So they got to go back in, what, 75, 80,000 to actually equip one? Nathan, if, if you get a new ambulance, what, what it costs to equip it?
So the ambulance costs about 130,000. It'd be about 210,000 if you were to buy all new equipment for it.
Okay. So did I understand that, that $176,000 that, that we have right now, that's going to be used to actually?
Equip.
Equip is the best way to put these ambulances.
That's our intention, was to look at using some of that money to help equip the ambulances with new equipment.
So I think some is kind of the operative word right there, because
Yeah.
Right now, I mean, at least what was discussed at the finance committee meeting was only $100,000 of that money or money in their existing budget for vehicle parts to be used to help equip these ambulances with the, I want to be careful about using my words, the kicker, if there's any remaining revenue from this kicker, that it could be used to either go to satisfy this debt, possibly be returned to the general fund. Those decisions haven't been made yet.
So we still, if you buy three, if it's $80,000, you still got 210,000 to come up with to actually, even though you may buy new ones, you still got, if it's 80,000 per ambulance and you buy three, that's 390,000 for three?
Right.
Is that, okay. So you still got 210 more thousand that you got to come up with to actually equip these.
So typically, what we've done in the past, we've used, continued to reuse the equipment we have. If we have the 100,000 that we're discussing, we would use that to help replace some of that old equipment, but not all of it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to keep it brief. I know I sound like Kermit the Frog tonight, and I apologize to the listening audience at home. During budget committee, we discussed this, and I appreciate commission sending it back to us. And I also appreciate the efforts of the finance committee in bringing a procedure to us tonight that may have worked. We increased the rates on the EMS customers late last year with the hope in mind that when this Medicare and Medicaid reimbursement money would start rolling in, we could reevaluate and maybe reduce that increase. The ambulances that are in dire straits right now, as, as we're being told, have been in this situation for a while. The proposal originally brought to us was, okay, now we need to use that money to buy these new ambulances or refurbished ambulances, whichever is more feasible. I was a proponent of sending this back to budget so we could hash this out. As Commissioner Creasy explained, the first idea didn't get much traction. The mayor asked us to compromise to come up with something. So we discussed this, this other option to bring before you here tonight. Over the last month or two, what I've been hearing continually from my fellow commissioners, and it is a reasonable point, is that we have the EMS audit going on. We are paying for that audit to be conducted. Let's wait until the audit is completed, and let's see what the audit says before we make any final commitment. Nathan, will waiting on the audit report to be completed put you in any more dire straits than what you're already in right now with these ambulances?
Everything we're going to do is going to take a risk. These ambulances do take time to build, about 120 days. So delaying this till sometime in May, or I guess possibly even the May county commission meeting or even thereafter, depending on how the, the commission wants to, to address that, it does have that ramifications of waiting that much longer. Will we do the best we can? Absolutely. But it does have the ramifications of waiting that much longer before you even start the project.
How much, if, if you can put a number on this, and maybe you can't, how much do you think this is costing you in repair costs during this time period, especially with the ambulances that have the higher mileages on those? I know John probably helps you as much as he can over at the motor pool, but I mean, how much is this seating away at, at, at those funds?
Probably a little bit more aggressive than it was last year. Part of that is we had ambulances we didn't intend to repair, that we now are going to repair because we need them. So we're spending a lot more money just to bring two of these ambulances back, replacing some engines and some items like that, to bring these ambulances back online, because we started out the year with 17 ambulances in operations. We're down to 15. So, you know, we're, we're trying to get some of these older ambulances that shouldn't be being brought due to the cost. We're going ahead and spending them. So it'll be, it should be higher this year than what we have paid in.
And you're salvaging the parts off the older ones as best you can to accommodate what you need?
Yes.
Okay. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Smallridge.
Yeah, could I ask, do, do we have a motion on the floor?
We do, yes.
And is that motion for 400,000 to be financed or 500,000?
Four.
And what happened with the, originally, I think the motion that came out of budget was 500,000. Is that correct?
Let me try to explain that to you. And, and this is coming from finance committee meeting. The original amount was 500,000, but due to Natalie working with Scott, the 400,000 is what we can best afford to put that in layman's terms. And they can explain that, the reason why it was reduced down to 400,000.
Let me clarify just a little bit. So in coming out of the budget committee, when they had taken the action to approve up to 500,000, I reached out to Scott and also the county's auditors. On one, what are our options with respect to a financial instrument in being able to go forward with this, and kind of educating me on the requirement of a legal instrument? And this, a capital outlay note, whether it's funded internally or externally, has to still seek the approval of the state. They have to review the cash flow analysis. So that was part of the conversation with Scott on him giving me some more options and understanding how, how we might be able to approach this. I also reached out to the auditors because this is crossing different funds, and also being able to under, better understand how to do this appropriately, so it doesn't get us in a mess with auditors. In talking with our auditors about that, they immediately looked to the balance sheet of EMS and raised a concern. And I brought that concern to the finance committee. Their concern was that if we approve a note for 500,000, that depending on how the financials work for this fiscal year, that fund could run a risk of its balance sheet. The balance sheet would reflect this debt, but not necessarily the assets as an offset, which would cause a negative net position, which is what led to the audit finding the year before last to begin with. They were just raising that. They couldn't guarantee that it was an audit finding, but it just speaks to the financial issues around the revenue and the funding for this particular fund. So in me learning that information, worked with the mayor so that she wasn't going to be surprised because finance committee was going to meet. And so from there, the conversation went to what is now being proposed to you tonight? Is that, I didn't, I didn't, there were just a lot of different conversations, so I'm just trying to accurately reflect that.
I, I've got to admit, I've, I've kind of struggled hard. It's been a tough struggle looking at this issue, but, you know, I, and I was going to make a proposal to amend the motion when it was 500,000, to say not more than 375,000, which would, if the numbers we've been given are correct, would permit us to purchase three buses approximately, give or take some. And, you know, I do think we need to move ahead with the purchase, and I, I think in a, this is maybe a good beginning, pending, looking at how much money we're actually going to get from Medicaid, and, and pending the results of the audit that we talked about. But I, I don't think we should do more than that considering our budget situation. But I think that's a reasonable amount to deal with. Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess, looking at this, it's a tough situation. I mean, I don't think there's anybody in this room that doesn't want to have good services for our people. But we also have to manage money. And I'm not saying I'm against the ambulances, but I'm looking at this information that was provided, and it's the Anderson County total combined outstanding debt service out of the general debt service fund. Since 2001 to 2017, if I'm reading this right, 20 million, 815,000, we have either borrowed or refinanced. I may be wrong, and you can correct me. This is the information that's in our package here.
Right.
Page 125. And then you scroll down, and you realize that Anderson County, Tennessee, total combined outstanding debt service out of the general fund, that, that number might look small to a lot of people, but that number looks like it's growing to me. And in the year 2035, we will still have a payment of roughly 1.3 million on those funds we've already borrowed, and we continue to finance. And I know it's a low rate, but it's still a cost. So, you know, I'm in favor of some of the notes I've seen on one of the other pages, which said, "Let's have a public hearing or a special called hearing," because I think it's unfair that we sit around and just kind of say, "Well, let's give 300,000," or "Maybe it should be 750,000." I think the people of this county should have the right to come into this room and tell us what they want. And if all the seniors show up and they say they want 20 ambulances, well, I guess we got our message. If we got 18-year-olds showing up that just want to get by in life, they probably don't want none. But I think the people should have a say-so. And I think we're just kind of sitting around kicking the can down the road, and it has to be done. There has to be a decision. I'm in favor of buying some ambulances, but I'm not in favor until I know what we've done right and what we've done wrong. We have a, a financial audit being done, an operational audit being done. Nathan just said it takes 120 days to get the unit in. But we're, we're ready to spend that money, Mr. Chairman. I'm not. 20 million is a lot of money that we already have borrowed. So if this body is willing, I will vote no on the current motion to fund 400,000 and borrow it. But I will vote yes on a public hearing to discuss the finance mechanisms and the total amount requested to take care of this issue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Geiger.
Thank you. When we approved, I'm, I'm recalling here, when we approved the rate increases, I believe there was a good faith promise that when that money came in, we would drop the rates. And do you have intention of doing that?
In regards to like?
When we approved the rate increases?
Understand.
You said when the, when that bulk money came in, you were, you were in good faith going to lower those rates back to the way they were. And I, I may not be recalling it correctly, but that's the way I, I feel I remember.
I think the, the motion from commission was to reevaluate that when that occurred. We would be happy to do that, but the issue becomes our call volume significantly decreases well. So when you have your call volume decrease, your revenue decreases. So if we do take that away, then we will have to have, find some more money that we would have to cut.
I, I believe you budgeted for three positions that you're not, not going to fill now?
Yeah, we've already cut those because of-
Okay, where's that money going to?
Because of the decrease in call volume. We've already anticipated we weren't going to make what we said we were going to make, so we've already made some cuts to adjust that. We've already cut four positions and done some other measures that would decrease our spending to help adjust for that, so we wouldn't have to have any more increase. So we're not anticipating we're spending our full budget. We've already made some cuts to help adjust for that.
Okay, so if we, if we were to request the rates be put back to the way they were, I don't know, a year ago? I can't remember now. It, it's a commission decision, and you would abide by going back to the rates of July or whatever that was?
It's all a commission decision.
Excuse me?
It's all a commission decision.
Okay. All right. I make a motion that we replace the, the current rate that we increased, whatever month that was. Anyone recall what month we did that?
It, it was tied, tied to adopting the budget for this fiscal year.
Okay.
So it went, I believe it went into place July 1.
Yeah, we already got a- Okay, I'm sorry.
Hold off then.
Commissioner Scott.
I was actually going to go along the same lines as-
I was actually going to go along the same lines as Commissioner Jaeger was. I quite remember arguing when you wanted to raise those rates, and you said that the rates would be coming down. The fire departments get, they were getting a fire truck once every year, but due to unforeseen financial circumstances at the time, it became one truck every other year. How many, roughly, how many vehicles does the Sheriff's Department have? Do you know, Natalie?
I can't speak, I can't speak to how many they have. I know that the capital request for this year was twelve cars for this year. They came before Budget Committee in, I want to say September or October, and that was deferred for sixty days, and Chief Lucas told me that he wasn't going to be in a position to come to the January meeting to revisit that, but in speaking to him in the hallway, that need is, is very real and becoming even more dire because, you know, we're halfway through the year and haven't approved any appropriation for that.
Well, and the reason why I'm asking is because I know that it's not like they have, you know, a half a dozen vehicles, and they get them replaced every so many hundred thousand miles. Nathan, how many vehicles are you refitting at this time?
Two, remounting two.
I have a real issue, obviously, we've, we've been in cer, you know, gone around in circles over this, with spending a large chunk of money, although I understand there is a need for the ambulances. I simply can't support it at this time. I think it's necessary for us to wait for the outcome of the audit. That's all, thank you.
Commissioner White.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I sense that we're going to buy some ambulances tonight, but, you know, as Mr. Vow said, we've got an audit that's in, it's not here yet, but they're working on it. I would urge us to wait and see what this Audit Committee brings to us. You know, and, and sort of in the private sector, if your calls are down, you don't buy new trucks. I don't know, it just, it, it just, this just don't add up to me. We're, we're paying forty-five thousand dollars for an audit, and then here we're going to sit here and spend four hundred thousand or five hundred thousand before we get. It's like the wife saying, I think the washing machine's turning up, and I say, well, why don't you run a, roll a close to it before we buy a new one? You know, we're, we're, I don't, I, I can't, I just can't wrap my little head around this, why we're going to move forward with this before we get the information that we need. And maybe, maybe we need, as Jerry, as Mr. Creason, maybe we need five, but let's let professional, let's let the professional people that we've hired to do this, let's let them direct us. I would urge us to wait and see what this audit comes back to us, and, and if it tells us to buy these, let's, we'll do it, but why don't we wait and see, and take the advice of what we're buying, and maybe I'm not making sense, but it just seems like we're, we're paying for an audit, and we're going to act on something before we get the results. I'd urge us not to, to do this, thank you.
Commissioner Fritz.
What we're doing right here is just trying to keep our head above the water, at least until the audit comes, is finished, and when the audit comes out, I'm, I'm going to tell you right now, I'm afraid this audit is going to show us that, that we're grossly underfunding the. Well, I'm talking about, I didn't interrupt nobody, so let me say. I didn't interrupt nobody.
Address the chairman, please.
I didn't interrupt nobody, so let me talk. What we got to do right now is keep our head above water. We are got ambulances, majority of the fleet of the ambulances are way above mileage. And I'm concerned about the citizens of this county. I want to take care of the citizens of this county. If they have someone that needs a call, I want to make sure we have an ambulance that can get there. And it's our responsibility to provide the ambulances, it's our responsibility to provide the sheriff's cars, it's our responsibility to provide all the other vehicles, and we have, we as a commission have not done our job. I know there's a lot, you know, I, I'm not going to go there, but, you know, but right now, we have got to keep the, the EMS going, we've got to keep them at least above water. The waiting to the audit is over with, you're talking several months down the road, and then it's going to take another several months to even get the ambulances in, it's all, you're talking another six, eight months down the road before we even get them, another ambulance in if we wait to the audit's over with. That is putting our citizens in jeopardy. We're talking, what, three ambulances to, to keep things moving, to ensure that we can provide safe pickup for folks. I'd hate to think, you know, if someone gets a call and an ambulance breaks down, and we cannot provide that service for someone.
You done? Commissioner Mead.
Very brief note. I really doubt that the Audit Committee is going to come up with a report that tells us our ambulances really don't have three hundred thousand miles. That, that's a fixed deal, and when they get much beyond three hundred thousand, how many of you have a car with over three hundred thousand miles?
Good diesel engine, right, go five hundred thousand. Want to take a ride in it?
Got one over five hundred.
Let's stay on track. We, we got Commissioner Emmert, and then the mayor is going to speak.
That's what I was going to say, I was just curious what the mayor had to say about this, since it's her department, so.
Well, she has to speak, but I let all the commissioners speak first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and this is back in front of you because of an appeal I made last month to compromise, and that compromise is based on the people of Anderson County, and whatever blame you want to assign, if you want to assign it to me or to Nathan, we're telling you, we are at a critical state with our ambulances, a critical state. We are not doing what has been done on other votes tonight, which is take money out of the General Fund. We are asking to allocate revenues that we are receiving and place those towards the purchase of three vehicles. We worked with Natalie on a plan, the Commission gave us authorization to borrow and come back to this committee with that mechanism up to five hundred thousand. Working with Natalie on what she felt, and the state felt, and Scott Gibson felt was the most responsible, we lowered that to four hundred and came up with the idea to ask your permission to use one hundred thousand dollars of those revenues towards the purchase of these vehicles. One thing I want to bring up, and I, I would like to go back to this, and I'll stand here right now and bet, I'll take you all out to dinner, this audit is going to come back and show we have not funded EMS. And the budget books in the history of Anderson County used to show a line called the subsidy line, and as an example, I will go back, when total expenditures for EMS back in the day, with many, much, much, much fewer calls, was 1.28 million, Anderson County was subsidizing Total expenditures, 1.5 million in ninety-seven, ninety-eight, the subsidy was 457,000 dollars. Let's skip ahead to 2000 and 2001, total expenditures for Anderson County EMS was 2 million and seventy-four thousand dollars. The subsidy in 2000 and 2001 was 571,000 dollars. Now, what happened is this was moved into another fund, everything was cut off for EMS, there was no capital expenditures allocated, and in fact, charges were assessed. EMS has funded 700,000 dollars of workman's comp that we did not incur the cost on, we are only 17% of the total budget for workman's comp in this county. We have been funding the workman's comp of other departments. We're not here to beat up on that, but we are here to say, not only have we not received a subsidy, we've been paying for other things. The year 1998, 99, the count, the expenditures for EMS were 1.8 million dollars. Do you know what Anderson County subsidized that year? 575,000 dollars. Now, C T A S came to this body, many of you were not here, and said, this will never work as a business enterprise fund unless you capitalize EMS with 1 million dollars, 1 million dollars. Not only did Anderson County not capitalize EMS with a million dollars, Anderson County assessed a payback plan of over 600,000 dollars. So you didn't start EMS out in, in, to the good, you started EMS out with a debt, and what has happened is revealed in the capital assets and the lack of replacement costs. Now, we are not in the business of entertaining people, this is not an option, we are providing medical service to the people of this county. When they call 911, we need to be able to get there. This isn't the mayor building an empire, this isn't for show, this is, we need vehicles to be able to get from point A to point B. And so I'm pleading again, just on behalf of the people, many people do not realize, but in this county, only 8% of the people we provide the service for have private pay insurance. So what does that mean? Dr. Hitchcock has, has shared with me some incredible demographics on, on Anderson County, we are an older population. So these people that are getting a ride, what we receive is capped. We don't get to raise a rate, or make more money, or sell it for a higher price. So the auditors are going to come back, you all are going to get that, and I, I, like I said, I'll, I'll take you all out to dinner, they're going to say that it's a lot more than 400,000. All we're trying to do is at least, as Commissioner Fritz said, keep the vehicles going, keep the service going, when you get to the end of May, you all are going to have an, an absolute assessment. If you vote it down tonight, as Nathan said, we're going to do what we, what we have to do. But I will be able to sleep at night, laying my head on the pillow, knowing that I gave it my all, that I lobbied for an ambulance, and there is not a story that I read in the newspaper where we broke down and something horrible happened to someone. I'm not asking for you to replace the, the fleet, I'm asking you to allow us to use our revenues, not dip into the General Fund, but use the revenues that we're receiving to borrow money for, for this note. So I, I still plead that tonight.
Commissioner Warfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've listened to a lot of different people, and they make some very good points, with what the mayor just got through saying, it all boils down to, we've been funding EMS for apparently many, many years. I agree 100% with Commissioner Wondell. Public needs to know, we need to hear from, from, from them. We can sit here and we can talk about it, I, I agree wholeheartedly with Commissioner White, I think we need to wait and see, yes, I agree. Probably, mayor's not going to have to buy any, any suppers for folks. My motion is, I move to postpone action on this, on this motion until the May County Commission meeting.
But this is a motion to refer?
A motion to postpone, no, to postpone. Because if, if you, if you refer to a committee, then it's going to have to go back to that committee next month.
Or lay on the table.
Or lay on the table, but if you postpone action until a set time, then it won't come back up again until after April, and we're supposed to get that report. So my motion is to move to postpone action on this motion until the May County Commission meeting.
Have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Have a second, now do we, we have discussion on the referral?
It's not a motion to refer, it's a motion to postpone.
Motion to postpone. Mr. McCamey.
I don't know a lot about ambulance service, I was only the director for 23 years.
Now, this is on the motion, the motion to postpone.
I'm talking about postponing. But I've never had a call in those 23 years that I was a director that said, just go ahead and postpone, I don't really need you right now. They've made the case, and we're talking about postponing, they've made the case that it's needed now, that it shouldn't be postponed. And, and I'm just like the mayor, I, I think that when this audit comes back, you're going to see, and I told you this when we first appointed or asked for an audit, that it probably wouldn't show what some of you had hoped for. And I still feel that way, I think that it's going to show that we have underfunded it for a number of years, and our original resolution that created this ambulance service was to have it on a shared basis, where that 50% of the funds to operate it would come from revenues generated for a rate that we charged. The other 50% would come from taxpayers' funds. That's the original resolution. It's supposed to be on a 50/50 shared basis, if you go back and look at the resolution creating Anderson County Ambulance Service. It was, just like the mayor says, she quoted some years that there were 300,000, 500,000, and yes, I was the director then, and I came in and asked the County Commission every year to appropriate money for the ambulance service, and there was always money, taxpayers' money, in addition to the monies that we received for the rate increase, or the rate that we charged. Since 2007, 2008, we have operated 100% on fees collected, up until last year, year before last, when we had to appropriate an additional 600,000. Just because that we have a drop in the call volume doesn't mean that it saves us money. We still have to pay for the availability, we have to be there, we have to be operating an ambulance service, whether anybody's calling us or not. And, you know, I, I mean, I would rather nobody ever call us. It'd be great, you know, means everybody in Anderson County to be healthy and happy and, you know, nobody having to go to the hospital.
Mr. Chairman, a call, a call for a point of parliamentary procedure?
It's still on the subject of just the postponement.
That's what I'm trying to say, we don't need to postpone.
No, you're talking about whether the motion is goo, is good or not, the original, not the motion, whether it's a good idea or not to postpone. According to parliamentary procedure, you can't do that.
Okay, I think it would be a disservice to Anderson County to postpone, if I will be voting no on the postponement.
Commissioner Creason.
Well, I've known Robert a long time, and I've been associated with him and the ambulance service for thirty-some years, I believe, Robert, and I have a lot of respect for your opinion, and I agree with you. The, the mayor made a good talk, she made a good talk at the Budget Committee, she asked for a compromise. I think the Budget Committee honored her and, and gave her a good compromise, and I think we have a good compromise here. And I, I think some of our national leaders need to do a little more compromise like we're doing, or trying to do, and, and I, and I see that this discussion is sort of getting, is kind of dividing us a little bit, and I... and I hate to see that. And I hope that we'll come together here with this compromise and pass it to citizens. We can't risk the health of our public over our differences. We've got to be focused on the citizens of this county and their safety. That's where our focus needs to be. And I hope that you'll vote for this, and I hope it won't be divided amongst us.
The motion on the floor right now is to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, my motion is actually out of order. According to parliamentary law, you cannot postpone more than one meeting in advance. So, what I, my motion was to postpone to the May meeting. That motion is out of order.
Question on the original motion, Mr. Chairman.
Any discuss, any, well, okay, if we're going to call a question, what we've got to do is vote on calling a question, which means...
This is on the main motion?
No, no, this is from calling a question. If we vote this in, that means the debate stops, and then we'll vote on the main motion. Let's go to the board and vote.
This is just for the question?
This is just for the question.
Stop debate. If you vote yes, you're going to stop debate.
Motion passes. Now, we'll go back to the main motion.
Yeah, could you state the motion, please?
Can you read the motion from the back?
The main motion is to approve the capital outlay $400,000. The motion. The motion being second.
For the fourth.
Chairman, the budget says 92,827. Is that part of?
No. No, this is just a $400,000 capital outlay note that EMS is supposed to pay.
It's going to make sure that the 92 is the number of votes.
Right. Let's go to the board and vote. See, you got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. Motion fails.
Yes, takes nine.
Next, Natalie.
That's all of the business for the budget in the Finance Committee, so Catherine's next with purchasing.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The first item on the agenda submitting for your approval is the contract with Robert G. Campbell for engineering services for Riceville Water Lines.
Move to approve.
Have a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do you need a board vote on that?
No, I haven't.
Motion passes.
The next item for your approval is a contract with Skyward with the schools.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And the next item submitting for your approval is the issuance of a purchase order to Southeast Apparatus for the Medford Fire Truck.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And we have three contracts under new business. Would you like to vote on them as a group or individually?
Motion to approve as a group. It's under new business. You have a handout for that, for anybody that don't have?
Oh, no, it was on the agenda for new business, but it was new business, Senator, the Purchasing Committee. It's not new business for y'all.
Are they on our agenda?
Yes. Section D.
Well, you know what page that's on? Sorry.
She wouldn't. She don't have it.
Oh, she don't have it.
No.
It was...
Page 167.
Page 167.
Yeah, it should be in your package, under the Purchasing Committee meeting minutes. It's a Section D with three items.
It just depends on what you put in books, at best. Depends on how you damage.
I gave, I believe I gave the paper copy to Annette, who then...
It doesn't matter. Because it's 203 on mine.
203?
203, Doc.
Yeah, so it's either 167, 203.
It's just on the grant, the EMA?
The EMA grant, the contract with Comcast for the senior center, and the contract for people admin for the schools.
Yeah, 203.
I guess it's according which format you're looking.
Right.
Did you say 170?
It's according where you're looking.
Yes.
It's according to whether you're on the website or the email. Are you on the website?
Yes, sir.
Okay. On the website, what page is it?
203.
203 on the website.
On the email, it's 169.
This is it.
There was a motion to take them as a group.
I'm going to approve all three.
And a second.
We've got a motion and second to approve all three. Any discussion?
These were heavily discussed in the budget meeting.
Purchasing.
Yes.
Purchasing meeting.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. And I do have one other request of County Commission that isn't on the agenda. We received the replies to the P Card Services RFP, and we're now creating the five-person evaluation team for that RFP. And this team will independently score the responses. We only received two responsive responses, and then collectively come to a recommendation to the, to a recommendation to the Purchasing Committee. And the team will also assist the new P Card program policy, assist with getting that implemented and the training. And while the Purchasing Office will be constructing the policy and training, doing most of the work, we'll be looking to that same evaluation team for guidance and feedback before bringing the new policy to the Finance Committee. So, what I would like to request is to see if any County Commissioners would like to volunteer to be on that team. Right now, we have myself, a school employee, and two other large P Card users from the County General side.
I'll serve on.
Show our hands, let's see who wants to serve on this.
We're seeking just one, one person for a five-person evaluation team.
I'll serve.
Commissioner Warfield. I don't see any other hands, other than Commissioner White, and he yielded to Commissioner Warfield.
Okay, thank you very much.
Next, we have Operations Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Operations Committee met on January 11, 2018. Due to the weather issues we had, we moved it to Thursday. We had six members present, two absent. Only motion we had, we had two. Upon motion made by Commissioner Scott, seconded by Commissioner Meade, passed, forwarded full commission with a recommendation for approval, Resolution 18-01-670, requesting authorization to apply for a grant from the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation for the purpose of securing funds to further, to further litter prevention education in Anderson County.
Second.
I saw a move.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next is a motion, I believe we've already discussed, but I'm going to go ahead and mention it since it happened in operations. Upon motion made by Commissioner Alderson, seconded by Commissioner Isible, passed and forwarded full commission for approval, Resolution 18-01-671, authorizing Anderson County to submit an application for a 2018 Community Development Block Grant. I saw a move.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Just a couple of notes. No action was taken, but the Tuppertown Building Update, Auburn Springs City Council voted to approve, giving this building back to Anderson County, Law Directors to draft a deed to turn it back over. Mayor brought up some delinquent tax issues. She's going to provide further information later. That concludes the report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And at this time, what I want to say, because we actually took this up a couple of months ago, about the Highway 116 project, about guardrails now at croppings. And I have been in contact with T-Dot, gave them praise for what they've done. They have installed guardrail, they've installed it in the proper position. I sent a letter to them and tell, you know, their appreciation. They sent it back and said that they really appreciate this commission, the mayor, the people that was there, that they don't see as much outpour of support and for all the community involvement. So, that's what's, that's been done. The next project they're going to work on is the outcroppings of the rock. They've got some other issues they've got to do first, but they're going to come back to that. So, on behalf of all the people from District Four, Commissioner Val, I want to say thank you to this commission and to the mayor for the support, and for Scotty that carried us over there, and you know, it was just a good day. It was a good day in Anderson County. Thank you. Next is old business.
Audit Committee.
Audit Committee.
Echo.
Yeah, that's right. I see it now. Audit Committee.
Yeah, the district, we had a meeting on January 18, Thursday, and we had, we had a couple of things that happened. I was nominated and voted in as the chair, so that's why I'm giving this report. We had audit, we had two audit findings from our audit that went on for this last fiscal year, 2017-1 and 2017-2. It basically amounted to two things. The Finance Office had a deficiency involving computer backup procedures. Those things have been corrected, and the audit members that were there said that what we did was proper, was proper. We also had, in the General Sessions Court, there was another procedural thing involving the way computers are programmed to generate a report of outside direct payments. That has also been corrected and accepted. I submit both of these corrections, and this was forwarded all you guys by email over the weekend. I recommend that the commission, I make a motion for the commission to accept the closing of these two audit findings.
Sir.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And the third, the third thing actually takes no, takes no action by the commission, but it does accept, other than your acknowledgement that the, that we submitted the required annual report of Audit Committee activities. Those are reviewed by the auditors that were in the meeting, and their comment was, they couldn't think of anything else we could correct, and that we were doing, we were doing a very good job in this county. So, I just want to make that part of the minutes of this meeting.
Thank you. Mayor.
Yes, I would like to address something on the Audit Committee. Last year, I attended the audit meeting, and the two funds that were, for lack of a better word, underwater, were Fund 263, the Health Fund, and the EMS Fund. This commission chose to do an audit. I think that was responsible. I look forward to the audit. Nathan and I always have. And I'm sure, on behalf of the citizens, we look forward to the outcome of that audit. But I do want to bring up the fact that Mr. Bearden, who was the former HR Director, was very loud, for lack of a better term, about that fund being healthy, his Fund 263. And the county, I encourage you to look at your audit book and see that well over $400,000 actually was swept into that account. You all approved all of that, but not a mention of that has been made at commission. Not a mention in a political way, as EMS has been mentioned. And then I will note, you are on your second transfer into Fund 263, and Mr. Bearden, when it came budget time last year, presented the Finance Office, no fault of the Finance Office at all. He presented them revenue numbers that we are not going to make. The Finance Office has annualized our current revenues. They're tracking about 4.1 million, maybe 4.2 million. Those revenues are based on contributions from the county and the county employees. How you report that those revenues are about $700,000 over what they actually are, I don't know. But you will continue to see Fund 263 come to you. I absolutely hold nothing against Finance. They've done an excellent job and are getting the fund in control. But this body was given a different sales pitch. This body was told over and over of the savings, and to use Dr. Hitchcock's parables, when somebody tells me their savings, at the end of the day, I actually have more money than I'm paying out, and the money is really there to back that up. So, I just want to express a little bit of disappointment that I think sometimes the issues that get discussed here are based on who's discussing them. The DARC building is another great example. We've been very quiet. Commission had a representative who was responsible, that was Commissioner Jaeger. When that contract came before this body, a commissioner was assigned to go back and strike line all these costs that are now being added back in. You have taken these funds out of the fund balance. On EMS tonight, all I was asking to do was spend existing revenues. So, we have Fund 263, where the audit finding was closed, all good, nothing to see here. And you're getting ready during this budget cycle to have to come up with the funds or cut the benefits to this fund, because you chose to believe what tickled your political ears instead of looking at the numbers. And I just wanted to kind of put that on record. We've closed this audit down, but Natalie is still struggling to recover the fund, and you'll be dealing with it during the budget session, and so will every county employee. And so, I just wanted to put that on the record in, in light of this audit discussion. Thank you.
So, that concludes your report, Chairman.
Yes.
Is it okay with you, Commissioner, Mr. Wondell?
Mr. Chairman, if you would like, I could read this letter approached Commissioner Hitchcock.
Please.
It'll be okay with you?
Make sure that the date is correct, if he changes the date.
It says January 22nd. Today is 22nd.
No, I'm talking about his final date.
What is the effective date?
Just change 28 to 1.
Okay. Just, just for clarity, this is a letter that Commissioner Hitchcock would like to have read. It's not to say that any action is being taken, per se. I'll let him address it. I just thought I'd read it for him. January 20, this letter's dated January 22, 2018. Mr. Tim, addressed to Mr. Tim Isible, Chair of Anderson County Board of Commissioners. Subject: Resignation. I'm resigning as Anderson County Commissioner, District 6, effective February 1. I've asked Ms. Catherine Denenberg if she would be willing to serve out my term until September 1, assuming commission votes to appoint her, and she is willing. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve my neighbors for three terms. I believe we have accomplished much by working together, and I am proud to call my fellow commissioners, past and present, colleagues and friends. I had not planned to stand for reelection, so my wife and I were looking forward a suitable housing arrangement for final retirements. One floor, handicap accessible, and near our sun. One floor, handicap accessible, and near our son. When we came across it, we went ahead and made the purchase. I anticipate completing transition of the permanent residency to South Knoxville by February 28. Until then, I will continue to serve District Six as best I can. Cordially, Harry Whitey Hitchcock, Commissioner, District Six, C.C. Jeff Cole, Anderson County Clerk.
Commissioner Hitchcock?
I changed the 28th to February 1st. I changed the 28th to February the 1st. I'll tell you why. I did so in initial bid, so Jeff Cole has a copy that's true, which would be the only one that's out there, the true copy, February 1st. And that is because it's my understanding that we need 30 days to fill a slot after it becomes available. The 28th was, was a, the purpose there was, out of respect for the commission, I was trying to get this chair filled every meeting. And so my, my constituents would be represented. The respect shown to the commission, how important it is that we be here and do our But if I do that, you'll end up having an empty seat two meetings because of the 30-day requirement. Hey, I'll move it up. I'll make it tonight. I'll make it tomorrow. February the 1st is just a nice number. But the idea is, when I walk out today, that'll be it. There'll only be one meeting missed, and that will be on the 22nd. And if you select Catherine, I think you will probably, there'll be other people apply, but if you select Catherine, I think you'll get somebody who understands those things, those values that I hold, the ideals that I hold, and, and one of them, quite frankly, is the truth. I don't, I don't think that, the way we deal with money comes secondary to the truth about how we deal with it, not what. And I think it's important. When we play the walnut game, where's the pea? Many, many people don't know where the pea is, but I know without seeing the game. It's right here in the crease of the thumb, and it goes wherever it needs to go. So remember, remember that, and maybe that's my contribution to you, is how walnut game works. But I've enjoyed it. I've enjoyed it, folks. This has been, this has been the toughest of the, the three terms, but I go see the neurosurgeon on Monday. I've had the MRI. My back is, looks like bone termites have been through it, and I'll see what the neurosurgeon says. So there's no guarantees that I would be able to function anyway, what's gonna happen. So it's good that we do it now for several reasons.
Commissioner Hitchcock, I want to applaud you for your service to your community, to Anderson County, for your leadership, being the newbie. You know, I look to you, and sometimes we may agree to disagree, but everything that you told me, I took to heart, gave insight. Commissioner Mead?
I just wanna say, Whitey, it's been great work with you in our district. I think we work together well. I also wanna say that in light of this kind of surprise announcement, most of us didn't know anything about this until within the last few days, I think we need to, what I, we don't do this very often, okay, but we know now that there's, there's a date. Are we not allowed to do anything until this date happens? Or now that we know it's happening, can we just start, can we be ready to commence the process as quickly as we can to fill the empty seat?
I guess that's my question. I'm sure Jeff and I'll start immediately on it.
Yeah. Cause I know this is one place where state law requires that the public announcement be, was a 10-day notice.
Sure. Yeah, well, we've done it before, and I'm sure Jeff is very familiar with this, and I am too, and we'll move forward immediately with it, under sad circumstances, albeit, but we'll move forward with the replacement.
Yeah. I don't think that requires a motion.
No.
Because it's something that's required for us to do in these circumstances.
Sometimes people like to accept resignations. It's up to you, but unfortunately, Whitey has made up his mind, and if you didn't choose to accept it, he wouldn't be here, so.
But you can show up, help move some stuff. We've, we had this state sale this weekend, and there's just, Ellen said, take a rake, and raking in the middle, and I call somebody that does flea markets, they come get everything. I mean, they raided my backyard, all.
Did you sell that coffin?
We sold a coffin to Steve Cotrell from Norris. He waited till it got on the 50 cent day. I mean, 50%. Yeah, he bought my coffin that went and all the skulls and stuff like that. But anyway, I can't, I can't lift the thing. I can't lift, I can't lift a quart of milk, got on milk. So my son, one son's coming up from Birmingham, and the other one lives here, but bless his heart, he has, and gotten the people together to completely remodel and update where we're gonna be living, and it, that's my beautiful kitchen that I'm gonna have so much fun in. But the neat people, I've got an old refrigerator that needs to go Blockhouse Valley. Somebody just pull up Thursday, get the refrigerator in it, go dump it, the rest of it, we're gonna rake it, and if you wanna take anything, there's jewelry, there's beads, there's purses, all kinds of stuff that Ellen had. Cam, I got a wonderful two-person tent. There's lots of stuff to just, but if you don't, we're gonna, we're gonna put it in the dumpster.
Mr. McCammon?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hitchcock had mentioned 30 days. Is there a 30-day requirement?
No.
So we can actually do this at our February meeting?
Yes, sir.
We can appoint somebody to serve?
We'll go ahead and get started tomorrow with Jeff.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion or comments to Dr. Hitchcock? Commissioner Wondell?
Uh, Dr. Hitchcock, he knows how I feel about him, certainly respect him, and I'm gonna miss Dr. Shroom. But my question's, and if anybody else had anything, I don't wanna cut anybody off, but my question, Natalie, could you tell me, I just curious, which department in the courthouse pays our employees? And what is that process? In other words, if there's employee that works for the county, they get a paycheck, do they complete a timesheet?
Yes, our policies.
And then that timesheet is approved by the department head?
Yes.
That timesheet's then sent where?
It would be, then be sent to the Finance Department for payroll. That's where the payroll processing happens. Robbie's the primary for almost all the funds, with the exception of schools, and Kevin processes payroll for the schools.
And when that timesheet comes in, we expedite payment, of course, based on what that timesheet says. Correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other business come before this commission? Commissioner Alderson?
So I don't blow up. I'm sort of disappointed in tonight, in commission. When we holler for the public to, for public hearings and public sayings and things like that, that's what you were elected to do by the people of your district, is to make the hard decisions. And I hope you realize, I was, some of the numbers that the mayor had said, 98 and 2,000, I was here, and we supplemented 600,000. So when it comes down to it, I'm very interested to see the audit. May be good, may be bad, but I think we're gonna be very surprised in doing our job. Thank you.
Make a motion to the chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.